closed, and we have a quorum, so we are going to start the regular, regular business meeting of the Rest and Association for October 23rd. Thank you all for being here. Before we begin, let's take a moment to review the ground rules for our discussion and debate. Each director can briefly speak up to two times on any motion, but that is only after everyone's had a chance to speak once. I ask that everyone take this seriously, as it will help us keep things moving, while ensuring everyone gets the opportunity to speak. Please keep your comments focused on the issue we're discussing. Personal attacks, interruptions, and long statements are neither necessary nor acceptable, and will not be tolerated. Also, please direct all remarks to the chair. No side conversations, please, or audible side commentary. If you'd like to speak, please wait to be recognized. In the interest of keeping our meeting on track, if rules are broken, I will intervene as soon as possible, or as soon as the infraction is brought to my attention. Thank you, and let's get to work. Let's get to item B, please. Approval of the agenda.
I move to make the following changes. Make item G, item F, so that means Rest and Order goes first, as opposed to Harbaugh.
I'm sorry, Director, I can't hear you.
I move to move
I move to move item G to reflect, to be the new item F, so Reston Runners goes before off. I make add a new item H to adopt resolution 13 that we discussed about in my email, but has to do with the adoption of the HR. Okay. And then, do we need an item on RELAC on here? Yes. And I move to add after item K. Is that okay, Erwin? RELAC?
This one.
Do I have a second?
May I inquire of the maker of the motion?
Please.
I'll make a second.
Yeah, I was gonna second it.
Okay, seconded, discussed.
You want to do the RELAC conversation after the budget conversation?
I don't have a preference as to where, John. I just want to get on the agenda.
Can we take, I mean, I think the budget conversation is going to go on for a while, so I'm just wondering if we can't.
We can make it after resolution 13, if you'd like.
If you wouldn't mind, if the board, if I can get unanimous consent on that, to put the RELAC conversation after, because I know that there are a fair number of people here who want to hear us on that.
Any objection?
Nope.
Seeing none? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a, we have a motion and seconded. We've had conversation. Let's just ask a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous of all in attendance. Thank you.
Is Margaret on?
Margaret is, is on, or she was. I don't see her there now. No. Okay. So, moving on to item C, member comments. Brittany?
Ed Abbott. Please state your name and address for the record.
I will. Is this thing on?
It is on. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Ed Abbott. I live at 2218 Wake Robin Lane. I also represent the Reston Association Board, Reston Association Member Board Oversight Group. Tonight, I'm sharing highlights from our governance efficiency analysis covering July through October 2025. The analysis shows encouraging progress during the summer when meetings were more focused, collegial, and time efficient. And the July sessions in particular demonstrated what effective governance looks like: strong facilitation, concise debate, and respect for structure. However, by September and October, we saw a return to longer agendas, amendment confusion, and debate repetition. These contributed to procedural fatigue and slower decision-making, echoing some of the challenges identified earlier in the year. Overall, professionalism reigns high, but efficiency metrics have flattened. The board's next step is to re-center on process discipline, pre-filing motions, enforcing time limits, and using consent calendars to regain, to regain the momentum achieved mid-year. This is not a criticism, but a recognition that the structure, that structure, structure is what sustains professionalism. Let me say that again. This is not a criticism, but a recognition that structure is what sustains professionalism. The board has the right tools. It simply needs to re, reapply them consistently. Thank you for your attention and for your ongoing commitment to effective governance.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on the agenda? No? Okay, that's all we've got for member comments. Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on to the consent calendar. It looks like we have two items. We've got the board minutes and the legal committee recommendations. If we can do that with unanimous consent, I'd appreciate it.
Just want to move.
Any, any objections? Seeing none? Okay. It is approved. Item E, volunteer interviews, please. It looks like we have one.
Darren, you've been asked to unmute.
Yes, I'm unmuted. I can't seem to start my video, though. But good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Benjamin. We will take your word for it, that you're a real person. And, oh, it looks like your camera's, oh, there you are.
Yes.
Okay, now it's verified. You are, in fact, a real person. If you'd like to provide us with a brief statement, or go directly to questions, I'll leave it up to you.
Sure. I'm happy to introduce myself. My name is Darren Benjamin. I live at 1642 Bentona Way. I've been a Reston resident for 20 years. My wife and I have raised a son now and sent him off to college. My interest in the Environmental Advisory Committee stems from, you know, a career involved in conservation and environmental issues. I, my education and early career were in ecology, fish and wildlife management, and habitat restoration, including serving several years at the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I worked for 15 years in Congress for the House Appropriations Committee, where I oversaw funding and policy for Department of Interior and its bureaus, and Environmental Protection Agency, and related environmental agencies. I'm recently retired from federal service, and have started down a path for a second career focused on local aquatic habitat restoration, stream restoration, stormwater management, erosion, and sediment control, and was recently certified as a Chesapeake Bay Landscape Professional. And I'm grateful for the opportunity here to be before you tonight, and the opportunity to serve the great community of Reston, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the board. Do we have any questions? Yes, Director Flashman.
I'd like to just make a couple of observations. In his application, which is included in the materials, it says that he has not attended a meeting. He has. Since the application was submitted, he has attended a meeting.
Great.
And has made significant contributions to the work of the EAC already. And so, I highly recommend him as the board liaison.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Please, Dr. Santa.
Hi, Darren. Thank you for volunteering. My question to you is, what, what do you think Reston Association should work on to improve its environmental impact? Watershed, tree canopy? Name your pick. I think you're muted.
To unmute? Can you hear me now? Yes, I think you can.
Yes, we can.
Thanks for the question. The answer's all above, all of the above, right? We, we are blessed with a wealth of natural resources here, and, you know, there really is, you know, to care for them properly involves, you know, continued management and engagement in, in all those areas. And so, you know, I'm a little biased with the fisheries background. You know, my, my, you know, focus tends to be on aquatic, aquatic health, but really, you know, all of it is important, from deer management to stopping, or trying to manage invasive species, and also to, you know, be able to optimize enjoyment of the outdoors by Reston's residents. So, all of them are relevant and important.
Thank you.
Dr. McFar.
First of all, thank you for volunteering. What do you know about hydrilla?
I know it's a problem, and it's a, it's a real pain in the butt to try and keep under control. I'm not up to speed on its presence or absence, or abundance in Reston's lakes, but would certainly be happy to, to, to get involved in that as well.
Thank you. Just please add it to the list that Director Santa mentioned to you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Benjamin. I appreciate it, appreciate it. We're going to discuss this in executive session, and we'll get back to you as soon as we can.
Thank you very much.
And feel free not to wait if you have other things to do.
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item F, CEO update?
Uh, no.
No, we didn't.
Reston Runners. We switched.
I'm sorry. I know, I just, I need it documented. We need to do this, we need to figure out how to do this on the fly. So, yes. Commentary or requests, Reston Runners? Is Laura here to speak to it?
My name is on the agenda, but I would like to just turn it over to Jeannie Johns with, with Reston Runners, and I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeannie Johns.
Can I ask you to just go closer to the mic, please? It can move, the mic can move.
Oh, cheers.
There you go.
Hold it. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. Jeannie Johns, I'm on the Reston Runners Board of Directors, Member-at-Large, and I am the race director for our spring race called Run Through Reston. You'll see our gear everywhere around town. This is the 13th running of this race. It's had a long history in Reston. It's all volunteer run, no paid, anybody, anywhere. We have had a marathon over the years. This year, it's a half marathon and a 5K. We have about 400 or so runners and 180 volunteers from the community that just want to be part of the event. We have a lot of sponsors, and some come on site and show us their expertise, some, some of the local gyms, some of the local PT places, a lot of wealth management companies, that type of thing. And it's just a really nice community event, run on the trails of Reston, hence we're asking to use the trails. There are, I'm a lifelong Reston person. I've been here 32 years. So, a lot of Reston, Herndon, Sterling, DC, the whole region, Maryland, people come from much, much farther than that to run the race, but it's run primarily by local people.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Mr. President, thank you for submitting your letter, and I take special note of the commitment that Reston Runners have made to donate scholarships to South Lakes High School and Herndon High School seniors. And for that reason and others, I will be supporting and probably make the motion to authorize the use of the common area.
Thank you. Yes, we do give every single year money back through our giving arm of Reston Runners. It's called the Reston Runner Community Fund, and we give a good bit of our proceeds to them. They give it to high school seniors, like you said, Mr. Farrell, at Herndon High School and South Lakes High School. We also fund the middle school and elementary school programs through their athletic departments. This year, we're doing a brand-new one. You know how the middle schools are starting to do cross-country programs? We're supporting the Herndon Middle School cross-country program. So, that'll lead to good exercise, and people getting outside, and it's, it's a very health-oriented, community-friendly environment that we try and always make.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much. We, I'm sorry, Director Farrell.
I was just going to make a motion, Mr. President, if you're ready for it.
Please.
I move to approve the 2025 Reston Runners Marathon and 5K Race.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any comments?
Speaking of the motion, this is an example of the kind of commitment to the community and giving back to the community that we hope everyone who comes before us asking to use our assets is committed to, and I look forward to others following the example of Reston Runners going forward.
Okay, further comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Unanimous of all in attendance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any adjustments?
Now, the CEO update.
CEO update, please.
Thank you, President Johnson. In your packet tonight, you have some information around facility assessments. This sort of wraps up a lot of the facility assessment work that we have been doing throughout the course of the summer and into the fall. Certainly happy, it's administrative update, you know, on that. There are two other items, though, that just kind of late-breaking, I want to bring to the board's attention. One is, last night, the Fairfax County Planning Commission held a hearing on the PRC ordinance, which is something that the board has been very interested in, you know, over the course of the 2025, actually, the whole year. They recommended to move along the PRC ordinance as drafted and published, with one clarification. So, you may recall, building expansions was a topic we spent quite a bunch of time talking about. The Planning Commission made a recommendation for the lower end of the range that was in the published staff report, so 2,500 square feet. So, it's scheduled for November 18th at the Board of Supervisors. We will probably send out another administrative update to you all by email, like in the next week or so. Just letting you know about that hearing, and, you know, what comes next. And then, lastly, we're getting ready for Winterfest. It's hard to imagine. It's only just now starting to get fall-like out there, and I'm going to knock on wood that it's not six degrees, or whatever it was last year, on opening night. But we're doing fantastic right now. We are maybe almost a third, or halfway there for selling trees. So, just to remind everybody, please put the word out, and we're still looking for some name sponsors, if people are interested in that. But the tree program is particularly meaningful to me, so just to remind everybody, it's $300 for a company, or $150 for an individual or nonprofit. Come down, decorate the tree, and then we partner with Cornerstones and get the trees and the decorations into the hands of families that otherwise may have difficulty affording them during the holiday time period. So, our goal is to get to 60-plus trees. We're almost halfway there, which is outstanding. Special kudos to everybody sitting at the back table, back there. But more to come on that. It's going to be a fantastic event, and we expect to have record attendance. So, happy to take any questions, and I've, I've got Peter here if there are questions on the assessment stuff.
Director Farrell.
Mr. President, I wanted to congratulate and extend, I'm sure the board will join me, our heartfelt appreciation to Mr. Lusk for completing the site-specific assessments that enable us to know what we need to do over the next 10 years, and to incorporate those site assessments into the capital improvement plan that we will adopt soon. We've never had the kind of detailed feedback that those site assessments have done. We don't have to speculate anymore about when we'll ever replace a pool. It doesn't look like we're going to need to replace a pool for the next 10 years at least. That enables us to make decisions based on data and not on fear. And I think that without that work, we would be guessing, and guessing is never a good, never results in a good outcome. So, I thank Mr. Lusk, and I'm sure the rest of the board also joins me in thanking him for getting this work done so that we could incorporate it into our CIP this year.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Cummins? All right, seeing none. Moving on.
RELAC.
We are, thank you very much, ready to discuss RELAC, and I think Director Flashman is going to take point on that.
RELAC.
Yes.
Oh, resolution first, and then RELAC? Oh, resolution point three.
Resolution first.
Resolution 13.
No.
13.
Yes. Resolution 13, then. I'm sorry.
I move to adopt, oh, you want to speak to it? You stood up, so please speak to it.
I don't have to.
I thought she was coming down for a dramatic, like, objection.
That's why I was like, uh, what's happening?
No, sorry. I just wanted to confirm that there were no substantial changes to the resolution, and that it's just incorporating the tools that were adopted the last board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
That was it. Just to confirm that.
Okay.
I move to adopt resolution 13.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any comments? Seeing none. Calling a question?
As amended.
As amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to guess, Director Lanza?
Aye.
Unanimous of all in attendance. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, we're at RELAC. Director Flashman.
I'm sure that all of you are.
I'm sure that all of you are aware of the October 9th announcement by RELAC that it would cease functioning as of that date, and its intention was to permanently cease operations. And this raises all sorts of questions, which we have confronted several times in the last several years. It seems to me that the prime goal that the Reston Association has to keep in mind is, if feasible, the continuance of the operation of the system in good working condition by another owner or operator, or, in the alternative, that members who were served by RELAC will be enabled to have air conditioning in the coming summer. Even if there are 89 medical exemptions, as stated by the present owner, there are still some 500-plus users of the system who are members of RA. To assist our members, I think that we, that is RA, should undertake some due diligence, including the following. One, determine whether some other entity is willing and able to take over the system and run it efficiently. Most likely, if at all, this would be the entity which most recently operated the system, not the owner. Two, determine whether the, this operator thinks it is feasible to do that is operated, and under what conditions and what steps would be necessary to accomplish that. Three, determine what the owner would require to allow the continued operation of the system by another entity. Four, determine what would be required by the State Corporation Commission, that is the FCC, to allow the transfer and operation of the system to another entity. Five, determine what would be required by the owner of the property on which the pumps and heat exchangers are located and to which Lake Anne water is drawn and discharged. We need to assure all that RA has no interest whatsoever in acquiring this property or the system. If it is determined, excuse me, if it is determined that the system cannot be operated by, for any reason, we need to assure that the proper steps are taken to prevent any uncovered issues from coming back to bite RA or its members. This includes, I believe, the following. One, ascertain whether RELAC, as a corporation, has surrendered its authorization to operate in Virginia to the FCC. What are the requirements for the same, and what, if anything, RA should do in this regard? Two, ascertain whether RELAC has notified the FCC that it desires to cease operating under the license to operate RELAC, and what would be required of it to surrender its license, and what, if anything, RA should do in this regard. Consider, for instance, that the FCC could be requested to require the owner to properly shut down the system and properly empty and dispose of the refrigerant in the system. Three, obtain an authorization, an authoritative determination from the FCC and/or a court that no, no longer is, quote, "central air conditioning service available to the lotline," unquote, of any residential cluster. That's taken, language taken from Section 62B15 of the deed. And therefore, the referenced clause is no longer effective, and individual residential units connected to the system may proceed in compliance with other applicable requirements to install individual air conditioning units. Four, determine who has control over the requirements to properly shut down the system, including the removal of the refrigerant in the pipes leading from the heat exchangers to the homes and businesses, and that liquid's proper disposal. And for, RA has some interest in this matter, see Sections 6, 2B, 1, 2, and 3 of the deed. Five, advise Dominion Power Company of the probable upcoming demand for power caused by individual homeowners, homeowners and commercial entities formerly served by RELAC who would now be seeking to install their own AC condition, systems, so it can provide the necessary facilities for the same. Six, determine what is to happen with the pipes remaining in the ground of RA after proper removal of the liquid refrigerant. Seven, consider requiring a bond from RELAC to assure the proper shutting down of the system and disposal of the refrigerant liquid. And anything else that you can think of? And I shall move.
That was a motion?
I am not gonna remember that motion.
Well, without objection, I'd like to add that to the, to the minutes, so it's in the record.
Any objections?
What, what you just said and what you wrote up, I'd like to have added to the minutes.
I see no objections.
Can I?
Please.
Since you brought this forward, Tony, do you have any reaction?
I appreciate Director Flashman's intent. I am a little concerned that some of the items listed, seeking a recourse. Put RA in the position of acting as a business advocate for RA, or not for RA, for RELAC or whoever will be the individuals purchasing RELAC. Right now, the board may have seen that a complaint has been filed with the FCC. I personally spoke with the FCC, was that Tuesday, Wednesday? It all, Tuesday. They only found out that RELAC was shutting down the previous Friday, so there's a lot of moving parts. So I guess to summarize, I'm okay with providing a report to the board about the items in there, but I do get a little leery if we're gonna interject ourselves into some sort of community organization to either come up with a similar co-op, or if we are going to act as some sort of broker, quasi-broker.
Director Flashman.
My intention is not to involve RA in undertaking the running of the, of the system or in sponsoring someone to do that. My intention is to simply find out whether it is feasible, and whether there is someone, in fact, who is interested in doing it, and what would be the requirement so that we can all appreciate that.
Well, Erwin, even if, with your permission, Mr. President.
Yes, please.
I would never advocate for RA providing legal advice to any entity. So if you're asking, you know, what are the steps necessary to file with the FCC, our sole response to an individual entity looking to do that is consult with counsel. If you're looking at, what are the requirements for an asset transfer, again, RA doesn't give legal advice to the public, it's consult with counsel. So, again, happy to prepare a report for the board, very concerned when we're giving that out to potential buyers or other members of the public.
No, it is only, I'm sorry, Director Flashman, just a moment. Before you do that, Director Lanza had a...
Has the motion been seconded?
I don't have a motion.
I don't think he has a motion.
It was a joke.
It was a joke. Okay.
That was a lot of motion. Director Flashman.
My intention is that you provide us with that information so that we can be aware of whether, whether, in fact, it is feasible not to hand out that information necessarily to anybody, particularly when it, when it is the result of legal counsel's advice to us.
Do we need to take a motion for that to happen?
I think, I think we do. Director Farrell.
I love you to death, Director Flashman, but I am not gonna get, be interested.
If, if you could speak up, I could hear you.
Sure. I'll repeat, I love you to death, but I am not interested in RA getting into this morass. There will come a time when I will offer a motion that this board recognize that the RELAC or the, and I'm gonna use the generic phrase, whatever it is, and I'll look to counsel, that, that the board declare that that facility is no longer available. That's as far as I'm prepared to go. I don't think we need to go any further. I am deathly afraid of initiating litigation of any kind, because we would have to name every single unit owner, homeowner, who is subject to that covenant. That alone will be a nightmare. We should not take on this expense. As far as what's in the pipes, as you and I have discussed, that's up to the fire marshal. They have enforcement action to take care of that problem, and somebody needs to call up the fire marshal and say, hey, what are you doing? That's why we have a fire marshal, that's why the fire marshal takes care of hazardous waste spills. That's their job, not ours. We don't have that capacity. The people associated with RELAC have been stressful to the board, to our staff, and to the people who have been connected to that system. I, I don't understand what they do or why they do it, but we need to do the only clear thing we can do, which is make a declaration at an appropriate time, and tonight's not it, to say that the provisions of coolant through that system no longer exist, and with that declaration, everybody who's connected to that system would be free to go out and go to DRB and get approval to put on an individual system. We need to remember that we've done a referendum, somebody remind me, tch, more than that, for three times. And in each of those three times, the majority of the people wanted out. We just couldn't get to the two-thirds vote. And so, the other thing I, I really wanna emphasize here, Reston Association has 24,000 homes. 24,000 homes. This is a large number of homes, but it is not even, is it 1%? 3% of our homeowners. And I'm not interested in spending a whole lot of our resources pursuing all of the due diligence tasks that have been laid out in the paper that was circulated this afternoon and read tonight. At appropriate time, at an appropriate time, our counsel will say, tell us that we can make the declaration that it's done, it's over, and the, and the covenant is no longer applicable. That's, that's what I'm waiting for, and I don't wanna do anything more than that.
Mr. President.
Yes, please. Director McFar.
Very, very short comment. I echo everything that Director Flashman said. I worry about getting RA into an activity in which we have no...
Farrell.
Yeah, Farrell.
I'm sorry.
That's why I was gonna...
Director Farrell, John, apologies.
This is why we direct all of our comments to the chair.
Yes. Let me rephrase. I echo everything that Director Flashman, I mean, Director...
Did it again.
No, no, I did that on purpose, though, that Director Farrell has said. I'm concerned that we are getting ourselves into something in which we have no role, thereby creating a risk, both from a resource perspective, from a task perspective, action perspective, legal perspective, for which we've got legal counsel here telling us what we need to do. So, I support Director Farrell's position 100%, and I don't think we need to get involved here. We have no role here.
Any further additions? Director Flashman.
I'd like to respond to some of the comments that were made.
Please.
I think that the argument that you, we have a small percentage of people to worry about in this case is not an argument at all. We worry about a smaller number of people for all sorts of things in Reston. And so, this is not asking us to involve, get involved in spending any kind of money that would be significant, number one. Number two, I am not advocating for Reston Association becoming involved, simply that we do due diligence to understand whether it is indeed viable or not, and that is asking some questions and finding some facts, that's all. And ultimately, having a determination made that is authoritative, one way or another, that this is not gonna be an operating system, and therefore, we're, we're covered in determining that people are free to go out and do what they need to do in order to have air conditioning on their own.
Did you have a motion you wanted to attach to this, like, like? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Director Justkak. Sorry.
I have a motion, but I'll defer if he has one.
Okay, thank you. I was asking if you had a motion that you wanted to kind of wrap all this up into?
Well, yes. I would like the advice of general counsel on the matters that I have laid out in, in my statement for the board.
Is there a second to Director Flashman's motion?
I have a, I have an alternate one.
I think we're, we're gonna have another one. We did not get a second on that one, so I'm gonna move to Director Justkak. Director Justkak, your motion.
So I will motion that the board will take the position that Reston Association has no interest in acquiring the property or the system, and request general counsel to write a memo to the board with his thoughts, legal opinions related to the memo that Director Flashman wrote up, and also include his opinion on steps that the association should take next.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Director McFar.
Could Director Justkak just clarify, what is the scope of the work that the legal counsel is going to look into? And, and I'm gonna look to Mr. Champ, and also if, once that is described, give, can you just share what you think as far as what it takes to do that, and how long, et cetera?
My motion was in reaction to general counsel saying that he could write something up in reaction to Director Flashman. I chose not to second Director Flashman's because I wanted to add a little bit more clarity, that it was both a reaction to the suggestions in Director Flashman's memo or write-up, but also some advice to the board on next steps, which could be some that are in the memo and some others that general counsel believes that, that we should take, or paths that we should take. I, my assumption is, because we have been down this road before with RELAC, that general counsel has some thoughts on potential options, and I think that it would be helpful to have in writing, because we haven't in the past, yet the topic keeps coming back up and we keep asking the same questions. So I think that it would be nice if we could have it in writing, and if this time ends up being like other times where the system comes back into operation, we have it to reference, or future board has it as reference. So I, I anticipate that it wouldn't take too much research, and I don't believe it would take outside counsel, but I would love to hear counsel's...
Just as a matter of clarification, I was getting at Director Flashman's points are 12 points, or 12 questions, actions, et cetera. So my clarification was with respect, Tony, when you think about this, are you gonna address each one, or are you going to kind of look at a general response to this?
I thought, because they were in groups.
So, items 1 through 5 on the first paragraph are kind of speculative, in terms of what would it, you know, determine whether some entity is willing to be able to take over a system and run it effectively. I'm good, I don't have a crystal ball. Other questions might require outside counsel. I have no idea, you know, if, what happens to the pipes remaining in the ground, whether that's an environmental impact or anything like that. I would need outside information on that. If it's a memo that you want of, where are we? Is RELAC still in existence? Tch, maybe. And where do we go from here? Yeah, I can do that one fairly simple. As a matter of fact, I think I've advised the board on it before, so it, but, you know, if we're gonna go, if the intent of the board is to have me to answer questions 1 through 8 on, we'll just call it the second section of Director Flashman's memo, I will need to take a little bit of outside counsel help, and it'll take longer.
Mr. President.
Director Farrell.
Speaking opposition to the motion, I...
Speaking opposition to the motion, I would vote for a motion that said, RA is not taking this over, RA is not buying it. I would vote for that motion. But any advice we get from counsel is going to be in executive session exclusively. I don't anticipate that this board would then vote to release whatever our counsel tells us. And therefore, we've heard it before. And even if it's in writing, we're not releasing it because it would be attorney-client privilege. So, I don't know that going, if the object here is to help people who aren't on the board, we won't be, because attorney-advice is confidential. So, I'm not inclined to do the second half of your motion. Director Justack, Mr. President. Clearly, this board is not going to take over RELAC. I've never seen any board being interested in that. And if there's a motion to that effect, if we need to do that motion, I'm happy to support that motion. But the rest of it, we need to stay out of it, because it's not ours.
Director Lanza.
Can I ask Jennifer a question on your motion, since this is my first rodeo through RELAC? Why would we not be interested in the decommissioned property?
Why would RA not be interested?
Once it's fully decommissioned.
My understanding, or our understanding of the property in the past is that it is not fully operational, and would take a significant amount of money to bring it back into full operations. So, I do not think that the board would want to...
Maybe I should clarify. Maybe, no interest in the assets associated with RELAC besides the property itself, once all of the environmental decommissioning has been done, the pipes are deemed safe, all of the pumps and everything are either removed or properly abandoned, just the land itself. Why would we not be interested?
It's inherent.
It's in set. Gotcha.
It's not, it's not, it's not in a property that RA would want. It's just a piece of a building. So, it's not, it's not like we would take over a piece of property. It's just a space in a building where, and we don't currently have any...
Gotcha. So, it's a human.
Yeah, interest in that building.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I can speak to, I would like it documented, because the board keeps coming back and asking Tony the same questions. So, again, I don't want general counsel to spend a lot of time on this. If he gets to a section that he feels like he needs outside counsel's help for, then I would say, just say, I would need outside counsel's help to answer this question. So, I'm not looking to spend any outside counsel dollars. But I think that it would be helpful, because every time, since before I got on the board, this issue has come up, and I think it would be helpful to have something in writing to educate future board members, to have board members fully understand what our options are, because we ask over and over. So, again, I'm not looking at this memo to take a lot of time. But I do understand Director Farrell's points, that we've been in places before where we do not own it, we do not feel like there is much that we can do as a board related to RELAC as an entity. So, it feel, it does feel, as a member that has been educated on it, I know what the memo's going to say. I'm just, I think it would be a benefit to the future board members to have it in writing.
If I can interject for a moment.
Would it be worth it to just have Mr. Champ just re-release a memo that he's written previously, since it's likely to be consistent?
We haven't written one, that's why I...
We've got no documentation, you just provided us informal...
Verbal, yeah.
Fair enough. Director Santa.
Hi, Erwin, I appreciate you bringing all of us. Some of them, I kind of agree with, what happens with the pipes and the environment, that's going to deteriorate at some point, so I see some validity to it. I also know the role that RA plays and where we stand, and I agree with John Farrell. My question is a creative one, and it may be not germane, so we can drop it to limit debate, but is this something that we can ask the supervisor to help with the legal complications and the things that you're asking, and maybe to ask of our CEO, to ask the county, to ask these other things that are environmental-related, that are out the scope of what Tony could be able to help, and then therefore, we have something that the public can read, that has more of a legal authority component, and then I call that a win for everybody. And please educate me, but I'm just trying to reach, I'm trying to serve the 1% that do need answers and a solution, while also recognizing the scope that we have.
Mr. President.
Well, I asked, I was asking Mac.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, Director Santa, Vice President Santa, yes, absolutely. Yep, as we talked to Supervisor Alcorn, which we did begin at the last meeting, because we'd just received the notice the day before, starting to begin any and all options. I think most everyone involved at this point thinks this feels a lot different than last year. Now, we don't know if there might be a new operator or somebody that comes in, but last year felt a lot more like posturing, and eventually, they turned on the system, which is, you know, what everyone saw. So, absolutely happy to follow up on those things, and work with Tony on, you know, kind of what this might look like in terms of all this. I think from a CEO perspective, what we would put back out there is, some of the community call us and want RA to take an affirmative position, or get in the business of trying to help an entity be successful out there, or we get the rumors that RA is going to buy the utility and become, you know, the operator. I think it would be good to be consistent in our position, or just be clear with speaking points, because as we get muddled about what we're talking about, the community starts some rumors, not, I think potentially for the good intentions, but not knowing, and then suddenly, there's a, are we more actively engaged in the business of RELAC than we really are?
Director Flashman.
I'd like to clarify a couple of things. One, the building in which, and the property on which the pumps and the heat exchangers are located, are not owned by the owner of the system. It is a separate owner. And there have been apparently rumors to the effect that RA is interested in buying that property, and I think those rumors should be killed immediately, because there's no basis in fact. And I cannot conceive that anyone on this board would all be interested in purchasing that property for any purpose. Second, the first part of the memo, or document, really addresses, is this feasible? Is it real to make it run? Is there someone who knows that it can be run, and is willing to put his shoulder to the wheel? And there's one person who can answer that, and that means just calling him up and finding out. Are you interested? Can you do it? And what is necessary in order to have that happen? I'm not saying that we're going to do anything more, it's just to give us a clear understanding of, is this dead, or is it somehow flipping around and waiting for someone to pick it up and make it alive? Because the system was working when it was closed. And it was, it was operating. It had some difficulties in the middle of the summer, those were apparently resolved, and it continued operating until the end date. And so, it is a system that does operate.
Who is the one person that, excuse me, who is the one person that you think that we should contact about this?
It is the owner of a company that was hired by the owner of the system to operate it this last year. And he did in fact operate it. And my understanding is that he put in a fair amount of money at the beginning in order to enable it to operate, and also may have put in further money in order to remedy the problem that occurred in the middle of the summer. I don't know any of the details, but he, I have heard, it has been related to me, and I have never verified it, that he had a plan to make it economically viable within two to three years. But I, you know, I don't have more information, I have not spoken with him, and so I don't know whether he is still interested in doing it. He is perhaps the only one who really could make it work, and so I think it's necessary to talk to him, and see whether he's interested, and whether it's viable, because it involves, obviously, the present owner to enter into some sort of arrangement for the transfer of ownership. And that apparently has not worked up till now.
I'm going to turn to Director Justack for a moment. Is this conversation germane to your motion?
I guess it's one of the questions, the one through eight questions.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be, like, that's not a legal...
Right.
I was asking for general counsel's opinion, although I am not adverse to Director Santa's request to expand it, and maybe general counsel and the CEO can split the questions and decide which, who gets asked for answers.
Okay. Director, actually, I'm going to go with Director Mull next.
Yeah, just wanted to bring it back to the motion. I think with the revised understanding that I heard from Jennifer, a limited scope would be beneficial for us. A limited scope memo memorializing our understanding as an organization would be beneficial. We're three months from an election cycle beginning, new directors will potentially be joining the board, this issue will potentially be going on well into the winter and into the spring. So, with that revised understanding, I would vote in favor.
Director Farrell.
I'm going to ask to divide the question, to ask unanimous consent to divide the question. The question, as I read, and I'm going to ask Ms. Copeland for help here, but the first part of the question was that RA would not take over the property, or take over the operation, or take over the equipment. That's, I understand, it's the first part of the motion. That I support. To make it clear to anybody who's interested, we're not going forward. I'd like to be able to vote for that. I can't support the rest of the motion. And so, I'm asking for unanimous consent to divide the question.
Can you clarify the rest of the motion?
So, the first part of...
Answering the questions.
The first part of my motion was that RA is going to take the position that we have no interest in acquiring the property, company, the system. I think that makes it clear to staff how to answer questions when they come up. The second part is to write up a memo memorializing where, you know, what are, what options we have, and incorporate Director Flashman's questions.
And that's asking counsel to do that.
And so, Director Farrell would like to split the motion, so that acquiring a property piece is separate.
Is there objection? Director Tanta?
Question.
Yes.
I guess staff, and Jennifer, and I guess Tony, whatever Tony you would write, isn't it already on the website, on the FAQ of RELAC? No? There's more that needs to be added? That's not already on that site?
The legal options of the board.
The legal options of the board. I would also just take the point out that we are in a bit of a flux right now, because of where RELAC is with the SCC. As most of the board knows, you can't just stop providing a utility without the permission of the state. And that will be something that will be part of the memo, I guess, but it's going to be, here it is, I don't know what the outcome's going to be. I don't even know if they go open an investigation.
I'm asking unanimous consent, Mr. President. I haven't heard an objection to that unanimous consent to divide the question.
I object.
I need a second to divide the question.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded.
Can I ask a...
You can make your comments to the question, yes.
On the second part of this, if we're still talking about that, the second, not germane?
It is germane, he's asking about what the second part that we're dividing is.
We have to vote on his first.
Thank you.
On his to divide.
To divide.
And that's what Joe Long is asking about, is what the second part of the question... It's still germane, hear me out.
Sure.
On the second part, as long as we do not get involved in terms of going to outside counsel and spending money, because we've already really spent a lot of money on outside counsel for other things, I'm okay.
Okay.
That one's, okay, let's go.
It's related.
Okay, side conversation, please. Anything, any other comments, questions? Okay, here none? This was made and seconded. Question, all in favor?
Motion to divide the question.
Motion to divide.
Just to divide the question.
Just to divide the question. Yes, one, two, three, four in favor, and then against, one, two, against, abstaining, one abstaining.
Are you voting?
Were you, did you vote?
I voted four.
You voted four? I'm voting to abstain as well.
So, it does not...
It does not carry.
Two.
So, it's four to four. It's three, it's three, three.
Doesn't pass.
Four to two.
Oh, it's four. Carries.
Motion carries.
Oh, it's four?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay. It's four, four.
Four.
It's four to four, it doesn't pass.
Doesn't pass.
Needed five. Then it fails.
Okay, right, because it's four in favor. Thank you.
Needed five votes to carry.
Okay.
Now, back to the original question.
So, can we vote?
We, Director Flashman has a comment.
Yes, I think that part of the question can be answered directly if Mr. Lusk is able to talk with the former operator, and get some of the answers to the questions that would be directed to the former operator. And then we'd know. And that would put an end, or at least it would, if the answers are negative, that would put an end to our further investigation of what happens in terms of making the system run. The rest of it is questions that arise in terms of what happens at the SCC, and what happens with other matters related to the shutdown.
Did you have a comment that you wanted to say in response?
Only, you know, if we're being asked to make a phone call, of course, we're willing to make a phone call. To the extent that I think we will get all of the answers that we're looking for, I'm not sure that we will, but we can make a phone call if that's what's being asked.
Director Lanza, I'm sorry. Director Lanza has a comment.
So, we've talked about the cost that would be associated with potentially using outside counsel. Maybe we should also focus in on the amount of staff time that we're allocating to this in something that we're, seems we're all in consensus, that we aren't interested in taking over the utility, and therefore, any due diligence should be done by a prospective buyer. That's not something we need to get involved with, whether or not there's any continuance or probability of continuance of the system, that's not RA's battle fight, nor worth our constituents' money.
Director Flashman's last time, go ahead.
Yes, if Mr. Lusk does not get an answer, that's an answer.
Fair enough. Okay, we're actually calling the question.
I would ask if Director Santa wants to amend to add what she had commented on earlier. Any, any, any items that legal counsel can't ascertain without outside counsel gets assigned to the CEO?
I move to amend Jennifer's motion to reflect that staff has the authority and judgment to pick which questions of the memo you think should be kicked out to the county for a response.
Did you want to do that with unanimous consent?
With unanimous consent.
Seeing no objection. Okay, so, back to the original question, all in favor? Okay, we've got five in favor. Against? Three against. Motion carries. All right.
Looks like board elections.
Yep, just a moment, please.
Mr. President, in words...
Yes, sir.
At the last meeting, there was a motion made, a substitute motion made, and the substitution, the vote for the substitution carried, but we never actually voted on the main motion. And I'm going to, and we ought to take care of that probably tonight, since it was a budget-related item. Can I bring that up during the budget?
Yes, please, let's do that during the budget conversation. Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep. And for the folks who are interested, this related to, the substitution motion related to the Hook Road bathrooms, it's on page four of last month's minutes. So we just, we need to wrap that up.
Okay.
You said page four?
Page four, yeah, it's in the middle.
Okay. We're on the board election calendar, though, so we're going to move to what used to be item H. Unfortunately, Ms. Boswell, the election committee vice chair was, is unable to attend, as was the chair. So I believe, Brittany, if you're able to speak to it, or did you want to have, there we are. Sir?
So we do have Ed Abbott, who is a member of the elections committee here this evening. In your packet is the proposed 2026 board election calendar. The committee has taken several spins at this calendar to try to see if they could fit in some sort of appeals process, shifting dates on the back end, shifting dates even after the certification of candidates, and just the timelines weren't, there was just, it was just a little too tight without some modifications or changes from the board or input from the board. So they decided to take another stab at it the next election cycle in 2027, and to move forward with the calendar that's in your packet this evening. If you have any questions as it relates to some of those timelines, I'm here this evening to take some of that information back to the committee. But as you know, we have until the end of this month to formally adopt a calendar for the board election and move forward. And we have a meeting with our new vendor coming up on the 28th, so we're trying to have some dates locked in before that starts, so we can really start moving on with that process. So I have the, a member of the elections committee here, if you have specific questions that we may be able to answer this evening.
Director Justj?
Can I move to approve the 2026 board election calendars proposed by the election committee?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any conversation?
Just one question, just because I'm not seeing it, or maybe my eyes are just giving out. Is there a time when we approve the ballot? Don't we vote that as a board?
That's coming up in January.
Is it in here?
Yes, it's in the calendar.
Okay, okay, great. Awesome.
Okay.
Just making sure. Too many dates.
Further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
All right.
Unanimous of all in attendance. Thank you very much. All right.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. I'm going to take our break a little early tonight, because I know we're going to have robust conversations moving forward. So it is 7:35 now. If we can come back at 7:50, I would appreciate it.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Welcome back. For the first action, before we get into our budget items, Director Farrell is going to correct the record.
Investment risk tolerance report.
Yeah.
But I did say after the first thing after break was for you to.
I can wait until the budget.
You want to wait? Okay.
It's much related to a budget.
Fair enough. Investments Risk Tolerance Survey, Mr. Vroom.
Okay, thank you. So Rafa, our investment advisor, they did a survey, which they've done every few years historically to sort of test out the risk tolerance that everybody has amongst the board members, fiscal committee members, and also a few of us staff. And this time, one thing they did differently is they did two risk tolerance surveys, one for the Triple RF Fund and one for the CAT Fund, the CAT Fund being the catastrophic fund related to stream and wetland. And after their analysis of the responses, basically their recommendation was to make no change to our current investment mix, which is 60-40 for the Triple RF Fund, 60% being equities or stocks, and 40% being fixed income or bonds, and 40-60 on the CAT Fund, 40% equity, and 60% fixed income. So they're recommending no change, and staff concurs with that recommendation. The fiscal committee did as well when we met with them last week. The only sort of wrinkle on this is, if you remember, there is the WSSI agreement, and it does have an appendix that stipulates that the CAT Fund should be invested, 80% equity and 20% fixed income. And the board, a few months ago, did a motion asking counsel or us to try and renegotiate that agreement. And we kind of held off on that until this risk tolerance survey. But now that we've kind of gotten the survey, I spoke with general counsel, and, you know, assuming the board wants to continue to move forward with that, that would be our next step. And really, no further action or motion from the board would be needed tonight. We'll just proceed on that path of trying to renegotiate the agreement with WSSI to allow for kind of what we have now, the 40-60 split, rather than going to 80-20, which some folks felt was, you know, a little too risky. So that's kind of my summary, but happy to take any questions.
Great. We appreciate that. Comments? Questions? Director Fleishman?
Do you have anybody to negotiate with?
Well, as I kind of mentioned in the memo, that could be a challenge. In particular, Army Corps of Engineers and Virginia DEQ, Director Reynolds, Mike Reynolds, he's had some difficulty in the past because the agreement was from quite a few years ago, and finding someone who is familiar with us in the agreement has proven a little bit challenging. But talking to counsel, we'll basically start with WSSI. I do have a good contact there, the controller, and hopefully they'll be able to help us kind of work it because the agreement was signed, you know, four ways between RA, WSSI, Virginia DEQ, and Army Corps. But we'll start with WSSI, and hopefully they'll still have contacts with the Corps and DEQ so that we can get that worked out. But I guess we will just, you know, give it our best effort and give you a report back if we're, you know, having problems making that happen.
My experience in dealing with them on this issue some years ago was that the State Department, that is, the Virginia Department that deals with this, was the agency that was taking the lead instead of the Army Corps of Engineers.
I'm sorry, didn't catch that last part?
The state agency that is in this four-part agreement is the one that was taking the lead instead of the Army Corps of Engineers.
Mr. President.
Director Farrell.
The Army Corps and EPA have delegated the Wetland Enforcement Obligation in Virginia to DEQ. So, Mr. Director Fleishman is accurate on that. The primary contact is with DEQ. And the former head of WSSI is the head of the State Department of Environment. So that might be a good place to start also. Mr. Rollban is now the head of the DEQ. So I call to Mr. Rollban might be.
It might be, yeah. Always nice to get advice from subject manager experts. Mr. Dr. Malone?
Yep. Two things. First, Ed, considering that the output of the report was basically make no changes, do you need any direction from the board in order to continue on at this point?
I don't believe so, no.
And then the second thing is the fiscal committee considered this as well and made the recommendation that the board accepts the Rafa recommendations of maintaining the makeup of the two investment portfolios. So you all should have in front of you the motions of the fiscal committee from the 10-15 meeting, and I'd like to, I guess with unanimous consent, have those added to the minutes.
Any objections? Seeing none? Okay.
Do I move to accept the Rafa report?
Motion's made. Is there a second? Second. Motion's made and seconded. Comments or questions? Seeing none? Call a question. All in favor? That's seven in favor and against. One against. Seven, one, zero.
No seven. Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. To what looks like operating capital budget draft to feedback. Nope, there's one. There's assessments and finance resolutions, Resolution Six Investments. Also, Mr. Vroom.
Okay. Yeah, working with the fiscal committee, we have, or really, it was the fiscal committee folks themselves primarily, and Bob Patrine was the primary author of the final draft with inputs from, you know, others in the fiscal committee over multiple meetings. So we have a drafted new Resolution Six for investments, and the fiscal committee unanimously voted to approve it for forwarding to the board for their review and approval, hopefully. But happy to take questions on that, and, you know, looking for a motion to approve that if possible.
Mr. Patrine is here to answer any questions as well. So do we have any questions? Or Director Farrell?
I move to adopt Assessments and Finance Resolution Six regarding investments with one change. I'm on page eight. 3.1, the fourth bullet, equities but only via index mutual funds and exchange traded funds. And that's lovely. That's a great improvement over a prior arrangement. I would simply add in the word domestic before the word index. And if I can get a second to that, I'll speak to it. Mr. President, our domestic, Senator Poise 500 as an example, which would be an index fund that many offer and that we would probably have some of our funds in, those corporations are already international. So Apple, Coca-Cola, and others that are in the S&amp;P 500 have a significant international investment. So we get the benefit of international growth through those national corporations without, and avoid two things. One, international index funds have a higher management fee because it takes more work. And international index funds also have a currency exchange risk. In other words, they pay out in whatever the currency is of the home country. By sticking with domestic index funds, we avoid the monetary risk, and we are able to avail ourselves of lower management fees. And so I think it's smarter, it's smart for us to keep the money onshore.
Any comments? Director Fleishman?
I would like Mr. Vroom to give us insight into whether, in fact, we have money that is invested in international funds or funds outside of the United States, and whether he has any opinion with regard to that. Mr. Vroom?
The answer is that yes, we do through Rafa. Some of our funds are international as well. I mean, they, Rafa, who, just as a reminder, Rafa only supports nonprofits. They're used to kind of our business. And, you know, in their view, it helps to diversify your mix, and, you know, sometimes the international stocks are doing better than the domestic. So, you know, I don't have a super strong opinion about it one way or the other, but, you know, we do currently have some international, and Rafa would recommend that. I don't know if Mr. Patrine would have any opinion on it as well.
Yeah, but 20% of the Triple RF Fund is in international, either ETFs or mutual funds. And they are all rated by Morningstar. You can't, I don't disagree with what Director Farrell said about management fees, but they all, the funds themselves all reside and are managed onshore here in the United States. And they represent such companies as Nestle's. They're major, major players that just happen to be headquartered, you know, either in Europe, Japan, or even in China. They, they've done reasonably well. I think it is, personal opinion is, we could pare down that percentage perhaps, but I think it, again, my own opinion is that it affords us opportunities when the domestic markets tend to flatten out the European markets and the foreign markets tend to go up, assuming that we don't have a global recession. But I'm not predicting a global recession.
Please don't.
I won't be held to that. So John's not wrong.
All right.
I would, I would not go as far, I would say, I would suggest the board consider just keeping, doing a quarterly assessment of where things are and asking for recommendations from our investment advisor, whoever that ends up being, as to what their perspective is, because it's all very individualistic.
Director McFarlane?
Question for Ed and Bob. Up until now, with the portfolio that includes this international aspect element to it, have we had any problems with the returns, with the exchange rates, holding money back by these internationals? Because.
Not since my time here. I haven't been here too long, but.
No. They took a pounding in '21.
Yeah.
In '22. But that was, you know, a global event.
I just want to follow that up by saying, commenting that people who invest have a tendency to diversify. And the international market in recent years, and I mean in the past since we've become all global and everything, has been, I would say, a major element on anybody who does any investments, and they do balance every once in a while. So if that has not been an issue, I don't know why we're making this an issue right now. So that would be my concern.
I'd be happy to provide the board with an up. I do track these funds by the latest quarterly reports, and I can check Morningstar ratings and the management fees so that you have a better idea if they're more expensive, if they're more expensive to the association or not. Thank you.
Last word?
Director Farrell?
We are well-advised to be as conservative as possible with this money. It's the member's money. And I'm not interested or motivated by return on the money because this is supposed to be money that we're prepaying for future capital projects. This is not an opportunity for us to speculate in the market. It's about how do we maintain principle as being the most important element of what we do here. And maintaining principle is better done by having our index funds domestically situated. Thank you.
Can I?
Second one? I'm sorry?
Just a quick comment.
Please.
I ask for the last word.
That doesn't stop.
I just want to clarify. My comments are not related to being speculative. If we haven't had a problem, why are we turning this into a problem? Why is it an issue? That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? We're good. I'm sorry, you're, yes? I just didn't want anything to fly into your mouth.
I thought I asked for the last word. I don't want to take up any more time. The issue is not, you know, past performance is not a guarantee of future results, and this is about how do we be most conservative with our membership's funds.
Okay. All in favor? One, two?
That's the amended, that's the amended motion.
No.
No, this is for the.
No, I made the main motion with this amendment.
Yes.
So that's the entire one.
So two in favor, against. One, two, three, four, five against, and abstaining. One abstention.
Mr. President?
Yes, please.
I have a motion.
Yes.
Move that the board approve the revised Assessment and Finance Resolution Six Investments as recommended by the fiscal committee.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Questions or comments? Director Dreschak?
I have one question. So under item 2.1, specific objectives by fund type, I'm curious as to why we believe the operating fund investment should be at a very low risk tolerance while the reserve one should be at a moderate risk tolerance? And if we could ask our CFO if he believes, because we have recently changed our operating funds into different investments in the last year, if our CFO believes that the movement of those funds, those operating funds, would constitute a very low risk tolerance? I was thinking maybe lower than the Rafa funds, but very low is a.
Well, I think the reason we want the operating funds to be invested very low risk is because we intend to spend that every year. I mean, we don't have a reserve or, you know, CAT Fund or stream wetland kind of things that continue on for years and years. If you have a longer-term investment horizon, you can take on a little more risk because you'll get a little more reward over time. But in the short term, you don't want to take on any risks because, you know, you wouldn't have the money to spend for the operating funds in that particular year. And all of our operating funds are with Truist, our bank, kind of a combination of, you know, I try to keep as little as possible in checking and savings because we make very little interest on that. on that, keeping the majority of it in money market funds that do, you know, significantly better. And recently, I've moved to some in T bills and T notes. And, you know, I don't want to get political. I mean, you could talk about treasuries maybe not being very low risk, but I think historically it's considered very low risk to be in treasury bills and treasury notes as well. So that's where the operating funds are invested and, you know, I think, I consider that very low risk and I think, you know, generally, you know, the finance community would consider those very low risk.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Margaret.
Welcome, Director Perry. Against? One against. That's it, eight, one. Moving on to operating capital, I'm sorry, yes, operating capital budget draft number two feedback. Mr. Cummins?
All right. In introducing this item tonight, I'm going to be relatively brief. We're nearing the end of the budget process. We've had several meetings dating back to April and May to lead us to where we are tonight. We've had two separate public hearings, so the board can take feedback and input from members in the community. It has been through, this is now the second draft, meaning the next draft will be the final draft for adoption. The Fiscal Committee, you all should have received an email with recommendations from the Fiscal Committee relating to both the operating and capital budgets. To give your recap, at your October 9 meeting, the board gave us specific direction on a number of items that you would like manipulated and amended into the draft two budget from draft one. We've given you a recap of those on the first page of your agenda materials and then the total dollars that it represented, that some total of those changes brought the draft assessment down to $901, and that's where it stands tonight pending further direction. So we understand the board may want to talk about a few more topics. We have seen a couple of draft motions sort of sent, sent around amongst yourselves. We are happy to answer any technical questions or how that might affect, you know, either operations capital or its effect on the overall bottom line for the assessment. Coming out of tonight, what we're looking for is final direction for the final draft budget so that we can have that ready for your adoption on November 13th, which is what your calendar contemplates. So Peter, Ed, and I are at your disposal. We also have all the department directors that are here that have the, the big items that have been discussed potentially moving tonight, so if you have technical questions, we're ready for you.
All right. Now, opening up to the board for your questions, for Mr. Cummins. Now you would like to make your motion?
Now we'll fix it.
Director Farrell?
Mr. President, at our last meeting, as reflected in, on page four of the minutes of the last meeting, Treasury Mullenick, seconded by Vice President Santa, moved to defer the Hook Road bathroom project to fiscal year 2027. That was a substitute motion. We never took final action on that motion. So I would ask the chair to call for a vote on that. Substitute motion is now the main motion.
All in favor?
I, I have a question.
It says motion passed unanimously by all of those--
The substitute passed unanimously. We never voted--
On the main--
--on the main motion.
So it's the longer one above it?
No. No. It's this one. That's, that became the main motion when the substitute passed.
Substitute to the main motion passed unanimously.
So this is now the main motion, and we never acted on the main motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I understand.
So all in favor?
Can I, I have one more question.
Do we need to have--
Sorry, just a second. Do we need to have a motion to undertake that and a second for that and then vote on it?
The motion's been made.
The motion made and passed. We just need, the substitute passed.
The main motion.
We never acted on and thus became the main motion.
So now the main motion--
And the main motion was never acted on.
So we now move the main motion.
So now the main motion needs to be voted on. It's already been moved. We just need to vote on it.
Yep, just to lock it down. Director Dushak, you got another question?
I just want to see, so staff took $300,000 out of the capital budget, and it says Hook Road and tot lots. So are we saying Hook Road is worth 250 and tot lots were worth 50? I thought tot lots were worth like 95.
I think that was just from '26. Remember, we moved a lot of them from '27 to '28 in the motion that was made at the last meeting. And just so everyone knows, the Hook Road restroom is in the CIP in 2027. So staff moved it out.
The action has been taken.
Yes.
So that's 250?
Yes.
But then tot lots, I thought, were worth 95?
But I think all of those were, the ones we moved out were from '27 to '28.
Oh.
So it's not next year, it was '27, but we moved them all from '27 to '28.
To '28. So how did we get 300,000 then? Does anyone remember?
So what, what happened, just to, to bring everyone back, in the first draft of the CIP, the contribution was 3.15 million dollars. That was the contribution that was in the assessment. In draft two, the assessment, it was lowered 300, $300,000 to 2.85. So the way that we explained it in the memo was mostly Hook Road restroom and some of the tot lots that we moved out.
I think you mentioned also some foot bridges because of the condition assessment survey.
Correct. We did also alter the footbridge replacement schedule pretty significantly based on the results of the condition assessment. If you remember, because I know everyone memorizes their CIP, there was two footbridges for design and two for replacement each year. That has been significantly altered to less money based on the condition assessment. So that's how we explained it in the memo. It's also important to remember, we worked on this on a Thursday night, Ed got it out on a Tuesday, so some, you know, the money, the numbers are correct, but we went through this relatively quickly when we got this out to the board.
And that's what I'm just trying to verify, like, are, are we sure the numbers are correct?
They are. We also, if you remember from the memo we put out in the first draft budget, one of our recommendations for lowering the assessment was removing 300K from the, from the contribution, excuse me. So that was, what we did in draft two was reduce the contribution by 300K.
But shouldn't the movement of the projects also reduce CIP?
They did. So we're now talking about two different things.
Because this wasn't a funding motion, this was just to move Hook Road.
Correct. So Hook, Hook Road has been moved to 2027. We are talking, I'm talking solely, I'm sorry, about the, about, no, about the contribution to the CIP. The actual spend has also gone down from draft one to draft two, which, and then comes down even further because of the unassigned money that we're adding from Triple RF and CARF and canceled projects. So the spend, the spend is less and the contribution is less.
But that still only yielded us 300,000?
I'm going to just call this one for being, not being germane to the question. We're still just trying to formalize the actual motion, the action that's been taken.
I'm just trying to figure out how it affects the budget for--
I think that's what we're going to do is right after this particular motion.
Okay.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Six in favor, against? Abstaining?
Abstain.
Two, three abstentions. Okay.
Mr. President, I apologize, I should have been on it and called it to your attention. I beg your pardon.
All right, so moving on to comments and questions heard this week for this draft of the budget.
Can I point you out two things, that we deferred two action items from last month to this month in the minutes?
Okay.
If you look at page--
But can we go back to my, like--
Ma'am, I'm happy to, but I just want to point out to the board that we're on page five of the minutes. We deferred the question of the CIP contribution and we deferred the question of, uh, redo, the election expenses. So those two issues are pending. I'm happy to have whatever Director Dushak wants to pursue, pursued. I just don't want us to drop these two issues because we voted to defer it to tonight.
Well, understood. Let's wrap up Director Dushak's issues and then we'll move those into, we'll state, we'll keep those clearly in our sights.
Just so long as we take action on them before the end of the evening. That's all I wanted to accomplish, Mr. President.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Director Dushak?
I, I guess I, I don't understand how between the draft two memo, the actions that we took last meeting still only yielded 300,000 in capital, because I thought it was going to yield more than that. So I guess I'm trying to understand from staff's perspective, what makes up the 300,000 in the memo, in this month's memo?
Mr. Cummins? So just for the board's indulgence, not realizing we were going to take up the, the motion from last time, we had planned on having our chief financial officer walk through a few spreadsheets that we thought might ask, answer some questions that we had anticipated from the board or you sent us emails on. Very brief, because everyone's seen lots of slides from us on the budget, but it might make sense just to have Ed walk through some of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, good.
We could bring up those slides, and it's the slides that I emailed earlier and they have been added to the public website in the package as well. But if you could go to the next one, please. And the next one is just the budget calendar, and I just wanted to highlight, you know, tonight is the public hearing number two, and this is the night that we're looking for feedback from the board on draft two to give us feedback for draft three, the final budget, which is due to be released on November 7th so that we can adopt it on November 13th. And just as a reminder, like last year, what happened is we didn't finish tonight and we had to have another meeting the following week. And, you know, ideally, we'd like to avoid that. So just, just as a reminder, that's our calendar, trying to get the final feedback on nice and clear tonight so that we can get the draft three slash final budget out on the 7th and adopt it on the 13th. Next slide. And this is a summary of the changes that were made, and we tried to follow the motions that were made in the last meeting as best as possible. There were a couple that were, I don't want to say vague, but not quite exact, like look at things that were over a 20% increase. So we, we did our best to try and, you know, follow the intent of those. We made some reductions. I made a point where we didn't reduce it in one case because it was driven by member budget suggestions. And then the capital contribution that Director Dushak was asking about, there was no specific motion on the capital contribution, but we had some discussion and our feeling was that your intent was that when we were pushing out projects like Hook Road and tot lots, that you wanted to reduce the capital contribution as well. Just a reminder, the capital contribution does not equal the spend. So in theory, when we increase or reduce the spend, it doesn't directly reduce the capital contribution or increase it. But Pete had talked about how we had proposed dropping it to a 285 from a 315, and with the discussion and motion to push out Hook Road and tot lots, that's what we brought it down, was the 300. So that was kind of the thinking, our rationale, even though there was no specific motion on a specific amount to reduce the capital contribution. So that's how we got there. And it did reduce the overall assessment from 923 to 901 in draft two. So any questions on that before we move on? Does that sort of help Director Dushak? And whether or not you agree with our thinking, that was kind of our thinking, our thought process there.
Yeah, we deferred everything related to funding, so I didn't think you guys would do anything with funding, and it's fine. I, again, I'm just trying to understand if the Triple RF capital budget in draft one at the end of September, so it was the last version before this one, the Triple RF capital budget was 3,131,000, and now it's 3,137,000.
So--
And so it went up a little bit. The CARF budget went from 490 to 240, so that 250 came out.
Right.
Where's the other 50,000? If the Triple RF went up and CARF went down by Hook Road of 250, then where did you guys get the other 50,000? Is that 300,000 totally funding? That's--
I think, I think I, I think I understand, so I think I can provide some clarity here in, and I just have to look at multiple tabs, so sorry, I'm looking at my computer. When we look at, when we're looking at the CIP, if you're all following along, at the very bottom, there's a total capital spend number, which includes Triple RF and CARF. In draft, the draft from the previous meeting, that number was 3,21930. If you go to this draft, it's 2,685.
Could you go to slide eight, it has some of this?
It's 2,685,500, which is inclusive of moving out Hook Road, which is inclusive of using unassigned funds, which is inclusive of using canceled project money. So the total capital spend is 2,685,500, which is down from 3,21930 in the previous draft. Because of the work of the working group and what we've proposed earlier in the year, we've been talking about the contribution instead of the spend. So the contribution is about 200K more than what the spend would be, or, you know, 165-ish. So the spend is down to 2,685, just to summarize, the spend is down to 2,685, which is inclusive of foot bridges, tot lots, moving Hook Road out, that's the total capital budget from draft, the previous draft being 3,21930. I, I hope, that should provide a little clarity.
So it's down 336,000. And 250 of that is Hook Road.
Right.
So we only have 86,000 in unassigned projects and canceled projects? That doesn't make sense.
It, it, no, it doesn't make sense. The, the rest of that money that you're looking at is what we moved out in foot bridges and a few other things that we just, we decided we didn't have to do or we got better numbers on.
Okay. So you moved out other projects.
Right.
So we still have not taken into account unassigned and canceled?
No.
Which we could take action on tonight.
So that, the 2,685 spend number that we have been talking about is inclusive of the unassigned funds? The total capital budget would have been 3,377 here, less the unassigned, and that's how we--
Yeah, we already did a 500K from Triple RF unassigned, 100K from CARF unassigned, and 91.5 from canceled projects. We already have those offsets built into it.
And just for everyone's clarity, that is in the packet in section K5.
Page 10.
On page 10.
Okay. So from the funding, we took away unassigned and canceled projects, but we didn't take away the money savings by pushing out Hook Road or by the other minor changes you made, like foot bridges and stuff. We're still funding those?
Hmm, no.
No. Do you? Do you see what I'm saying? Like, how are they, how are they all not adding up to be one number? And maybe we need to look at it more in detail, but--
Sure.
I would think that it would be 336, the number we pulled out of projects, Hook Road plus the, the foot bridges and minor ones, plus the 100 and the 91.5.
I am, excuse me, I'm going to call for, for a five minute recess so you all can sort this out, and we'll get back at 8:35.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Sure.
Thanks for bearing with us. While we were on our brief recess, we're going to get back to this conversation. Can I go to Mr. Lusk? Can you give us a high-level overview of the question that was asked before?
Sure.
So everyone's on the same page?
Sure. So in the last version of the CIP from the last meeting, there was a higher total capital budget, which is inclusive of our triple RF and CARF spending. In the draft two of the CIP, there is a lower spend and a lower contribution to the CIP. Some of you will remember from the last meeting, we talked, we had a significant conversation about playgrounds and tot lots, and we decided to move some of the funding back into next year for playgrounds and tot lots that we've already talked to the community about. And that, that was the hangup between Director Justkirk and I. There were a few other items, but that's, that was the main hangup.
Okay.
There were some additions to the actual project list that weren't in the last CIP.
Okay. And we're all sorted out?
The numbers work out?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Yeah. But it has nothing to do with the funding.
It's the...
It's the actual projects.
Right. Okay.
All right. Further questions or comments?
Is it okay if we get back to the slides? At a couple of points I wanted to make on a few of the slides?
If you'd like to. Yes, please.
All right. Back to slide four, if we could, please. And here, I really just wanted to highlight that I added in 2027. So this is the first time we've seen 2027. And just briefly, the assumptions I made, I did a 3% increase to non-assessment revenues, minus, I took out 50K for finance because I'm anticipating that interest rates will come down, so our interest revenue will come down a bit. So that was the assumption there. I don't think, probably, we want to spend a whole lot of time focusing on 27, but we did get it into the draft two this year versus two years ago. It didn't show up till draft three, and it really was just a copy paste. The exact amounts were in the 24 budget, went into the 25. But I tried to put a little more realism and thought process into it, but it's not a lot of detail. Then on the expenses, I did a 4% increase to operating expenses. And then on the next slide, the capital is just following the CIP. And then I wanted to just briefly mention the triple RF reserve because there's been a lot of, yeah, I think Kara's, if you keep moving, there were three slides on that, and now we're on to the triple RF reserve. And I just wanted to briefly mention this because there've been some emails and also a lot of discussion in the fiscal committee last week, a lot of concern about the triple RF balance and the fact that it will be going down by 2 million over the next couple of years. It's currently a little over 5 million of unassigned triple RF. And just explain, like, where does this unassigned triple RF come from? It comes from, over the years, when capital contributions were made that were greater than the spend. For example, if they were funding to the 10-year average, which was the common practice, if they were funding more than the spend, that additional becomes unassigned. And then we also have unassigned from gains that we received over the years, both realized gains and unrealized gains, plus any favorable project variances when projects came in under budget or canceled projects. So kind of the combination of those over the years has added up to a little over 5 million of unassigned triple RF. And I know there's been some discussion about, you know, we should try and bring that balance down some, but I just wanted to make sure everybody did realize that we are bringing it down by 2 million or just over 2 million over the next couple of years based on what we have in the current budget and CIP. And, you know, that was a big concern of the fiscal committee, which is why they did their motion to increase capital a little bit in next year's budget. It's not a huge delta next year. We're coming down about 400K. But then in 27, with the Lake Newport tennis, large project, you know, we have a big underrun, and we'll be coming down 1.5 million in 27. So just want to make sure folks were aware of that. And then the CIP overview, we were just looking at this slide, but just to highlight a couple other things, we do have the offsets built into 26 and 27, 500K each year. And just to be clear, those decrease the triple RF reserve. We have offsets from triple RF unassigned. We also have offsets in 28 through 30, but those are coming from stream wetland funds for dredging projects. So that'll decrease our stream wetland fund balance, but it won't decrease the triple RF reserve. But again, we're bringing the triple RF down over a few years. And, you know, there was some discussion about, you know, what do we have in Rafa, and this and that. So I just want to make sure you understood what we have. We have a little under 2.2 million of triple RF with Truist, our bank, and a little over 4.6 million with Rafa, for a total of 685 of the triple RF balance as of the end of September, our last month we closed out. And with the estimated to complete of the projects that we have in process, that's where you get that little over 5 million of current unassigned triple RF. And as I mentioned, coming down 2 mil over the next couple of years to a little over 3 million we would have at the end of 28. And over on the right, just for those who didn't know, and I didn't actually know this until looking into it further, but the amount that we have with Rafa for triple RF, it was all invested in June of 2014, has a mid-touch since. So it's been there for, you know, 11 years plus. 2.5 million was invested, you know, nothing's been added to it since that time or taken out. And, you know, we have gains since then that have brought it up to a little over 4.6 million. And I figured it out, that's about a 5.8% annualized return. You know, I wasn't here back when this was invested, but, you know, I assume the reason they invested in Rafa back then was, you know, just knowing that this money is, you know, generally going to be held for some period of time, and that, you know, past results are not a guarantee of future performance. But, you know, historically, you know, money that's in the market tends to do better than money just sitting in a money market or whatever. I mean, currently, you could get a little over 3%, but I figured it's probably generous to say that you'd get 3% over that timeframe because interest rates were really low for a bunch of years until the last three years or so. But even if we had gotten 3%, the gain would have been 960K versus, you know, 2.1 and change, so, you know, less than half the gain. So just wanted to point that out. And there was some discussion, some emails about what's in the resolutions, about what we should do with some of the money. And just to make sure you saw this, resolution three does require that the triple RF be maintained separately from operating capital. And at the bottom there, it says it's carried forward from one year to the next until spent or otherwise designated by the board. So of course, the board can, you know, do what they choose to do, but generally, if we follow the resolution, this does all need to be kept separate and just move forward year to year, which is what's been done since 2014. And then on the next slide, this is just, just a reminder that the current resolution would require that we funded the 10-year average, you know, that hasn't been done the last couple of years, and we have not proposed that we do that again this year, partly following the capital working group, and, you know, we're trying to ramp up to the steady contribution over the next few years. But I provided some information about if we did fund to the 10-year average, it'd be a slight increase in the assessment for 26. It'd be 909 versus 901, and in 27, it'd be 959 versus 951. So not a big increase, but a slight increase. But we'll do a motion to kind of, you know, not do the 10-year average again. That's what we've done the last couple of years. So unless the board chooses to go back to the 10-year average, we would, you know, plan to have a motion to suspend that again, like we have the last couple of years. But I wanted to at least give you the numbers of what it would do if we did fund to the 10-year average. And then if we funded to the spend, which has been something we've done in some prior years, just to make sure you realize, we would be funding quite a bit more capital. You know, it'd add $25 to the assessment for next year, and it would add 70, 7-0 dollars to the assessment in 2027 if we funded to the spend, because we have that large spend in 27 because of Lake Newport tennis. So, you know, just wanted to give you those numbers if we did fund to the spend, and make sure you realize that we're funding a good bit less than the spend as currently proposed in draft two. And the very last slide was just the five-year average. I've given you that a couple of times before, and just wanted to update that based on draft two and the latest CIP. So I gave you those numbers. So I just wanted to, you know, I've sent that out via email, and we added it to the online packet, but wanted to kind of make a couple of quick points there and see if you had any questions on that. And now would be happy to entertain any other questions in general as well.
Treasure Mullen, next.
Yeah, Ed, and if we can turn back to slide nine of the packet, of this packet. In the second box, you said we have never added to or taken out anything since...
Since June of 2014.
And, and on the left side, you're, this looks to me like we're contemplating, and we will necessarily have to take out in order to fund, because we're going to be drawing down these reductions in 26, 27, 28. Is that correct?
Right. Now, what we've historically done, all the way back to 2014, is we don't touch the Rafa side. What we're always adding to and taking from is the Truist banking side. Now, I was talking with Mac and Pete, I mean, we're going to be getting close, you know, dropping down here where the Truist side might get down to close to zero, and you might really have to tap into the Rafa side. But historically, what we do each year is, whatever the capital contribution is, it goes into the Truist, and, you know, we draw down upon that, and we've kind of left the Rafa side untouched, and we're kind of adding to and subtracting from our Truist banking side where we, you know, also maintain some triple RF, more of the triple RF that's intended to be used in a shorter timeframe. But, but, you know, with this drawdown, you know, it could start to get close where we would run out on the Truist side. If that helps explain it.
Additional questions for Dr. Farrell?
So I'm going to pick up one of the things we carried over from last time, which related to the, I found out that the appropriate language I should have been using is unrealized depreciation. And I circulated to everyone an email I got from John Higgins, who was a longtime treasurer of the association, and as I understand, was there when we created the triple RF fund. And I'm going to ask that his email be included in the minutes. I ask you to have his consent for that.
See, no, Dr.
So his, I did copy it to the whole board. You should have gotten it. And in fact, I copied it to Director.
I think it was the individual email addresses versus the board thing, so he might not have gotten it.
Right, okay.
I can forward it to you, Tony.
Thank you. So what former Treasurer Higgins pointed out was that every year, basically, we've made money on the money that is with Rafa. And we, the board did not take any action on the unrealized depreciation of the Rafa funds. With the net result was that, that money, without board, of an affirmative board decision, continued to grow. Started out 2.5 million, it's now north of 4. This year, someone can correct me, as of the last time we checked, we've made 400,000 on that money this year.
Yeah, there was like 446.
There you go. So I'll stick with 400,000. That's just round numbers, it's easier. And so the Rafa money that started out as 2.5 million is now north of 4. If we take no action, it'll be 4, 4.4, 4.5. And it was never intended, according to Mr. Higgins, for us to allow that money just passively to increase. That money was never intended to be a rainy day capital fund. What it was intended to do was to prepay for capital expenditures that were fairly large that were anticipated in the future. So I, some of you who were on the board at the time can remember that chart that was shown to us, where one year we had $2 million in capital expenditures, and the next year we had $9 million in capital expenditures. And I remember seeing one after the last reserve study was reported, where it was going even higher, scared the lights on everybody. Well, you see this, Capone, and because of our site assessment work, we know we never have to go to that kind of number. 3.5, 3.7, it's going to cover it most years, and one year where we go to 4.1. So what Mr. Higgins was saying to me and to the rest of the board is, you all need to make a decision and not just allow that fund to grow passively. I circulated a motion, and based on my conversation with Director Mullins, I'm going to change the motion that I'm going to move from what I sent you, but it's intended to get us to the same place. The reason I changed it is, if you look at page 10, yeah, of the capital budget plan, right, we're down to a capital contribution of 2.8 and a spend of 2.6 or 2.7. Am I reading that right, Mr. Lusk? Okay. If we took the 400,000...
With offsets, sorry.
Yeah, right, right, with offsets. So if we did a further offset of the 4.40, which is what the motion I circulated to you all, we would be driving this number down even more, and with the result that we would artificially lower what we're spending. And then next year, when we went back to 4.1, that would be a huge jump. And that's not, that kind of change is not what I was trying to accomplish. What I am trying to accomplish is to affirmatively say that our profits, we should be taking profits, and we should be taking the profits from our capital fund and using them to fund our capital expenses, okay? Not, not to fund the assessment, but to fund the capital expenses. That result of that, of course, is we will be able to hold the assessment down, because the extent that we have these expenses, these capital expenses, we fund them out of the general fund. And to the extent we don't have to make a general fund transfer to triple RF to fund for that year, it enables us to keep it down. So I'm going to make the following motion. It's a little bit different from what I sent you before, okay? I move to direct staff to liquidate the unrealized appreciation of triple RF funds as of October 31st, 2026. In other words, next year, I want them to do this, and transfer the same to the Association General Fund, which was always the intention, and credit the 2027 CIP budget by the funds realized, and reduce the 2027 assessment to reflect that reduction. The idea here is to get in the habit of taking our profits and to end this passive growth of the Rafa funds without board consciousness or board awareness. And that should enable, assuming we don't lose the 400,000, that should enable us to meet that 4.1 or 4.2 expense next year without having to have that $1 million, it would reduce that $1 million deficit in capital spending. So that's the motion I'm making. I don't want to, I don't want to extremely reduce the number this year, because the rebound will be striking to folks. But I do want to get the board in the habit of making an affirmative decision. What are we doing with our profits? Are we going to take profits or not?
Just want to clarify one thing.
Someone has to second.
I understand. I need to ask Mr. Champ a question. Should we be using the term profits?
Mr.
The reason I ask, and I think you understand the reason I ask, as a nonprofit, it makes me nervous to hear us say, "We have profits."
I'm happy, I'm happy to use the term unrealized appreciation. If the chair is more comfortable with that?
I'm much more comfortable with that. It just makes me nervous.
But the, but the, the common parlance is to engage in profit-taking.
Understood.
And, and so I'm using it in that sense, but obviously, and maybe it wasn't obvious, I'm talking about unrealized appreciation. The extent that the fund grows, let's take the growth and use it to fund our CIP.
Understood.
That's, that's the object of the motion. And not do it this year, because we adopted a two-year budget, not do it this year because the number's already pretty low, okay? But do it next year when the number looks to be significantly higher.
Right. We need to get a second for that.
I got one.
Did you get one? All right. So the motion has been made, a second, or there comments? Director Monpar?
Just a clarification, because we're a 501(c)(4), as I understand it, with these unrealized appreciations, is that what we called it?
Unrealized appreciation.
Yeah. What would be the tax liabilities? Are there any tax liabilities?
I mean, we have no tax liability either way, but even if we were a taxable entity, you would not have a tax liability on unrealized gains. That's kind of, they're unrealized. You have a tax liability on your realized gains and interest and dividends, but there's no, like, if you have stock and you're just holding it, but it appreciates, you don't pay tax until you sell it.
Until you sell. Yeah, I just, I knew that as a nonprofit, there, the rules are different, but I just wanted to verify that.
Yeah, in our case, we don't pay tax either way.
Okay, thank you.
Director Sanders?
Reaction, reaction from either Peter, Mac, or Ed?
I'll give you a big-picture reaction, and then I think Ed needs to fill in some details. What makes me concerned about what really is sort of becoming a buy-down kind of conversation is, Director Farrell's correct, there are accounts that we have made money on. In years that start to happen where we don't have easy gains to pull from, the only place to pull that necessary capital money for is additional assessment dollars. So masking that scenario by not collecting the correct amount on an ongoing basis, I mean, the game plan is to ramp up in collection so that it's a constant collection. The spend is the only thing that goes up and down at that point. But if we're not collecting because we're going to use money from the savings account, effectively, we're decreasing the collection amount in order to make the assessment less. So generally, that's a concern. So it's a philosophical thing. It's not going to break the bank one way or the other, but it is a substantive change from how we've been thinking about trying to build up over time.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, I think the main point is that I'm in agreement with the fiscal committee, who is already concerned that we're bringing down the triple RF balance by $2 million. I mean, we proposed $1 million worth of offset from the unassigned, but also we're underfunding it compared to the spend, so it's going to come down another million. So the fact that it's coming down 2 million over the next couple of years already causes me to, you know, be a little concerned to bring it down even more. You know, as Mac said, it's probably not going to break the bank, but I do share fiscal committee's concern there. And I guess the other thing is, to me, I guess I sort of recommend that we focus more on the overall triple RF balances. I mean, it really doesn't matter where it came from. If it came from prior year's canceled projects, or, you know, under-budget projects, or realized gains, or unrealized gains, or how, where it came from. I mean, the balance is what the balance is. So I guess, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to focus just on unrealized gains. I mean, it's really more, take a look at what our triple RF balance is, and, you know, if you think it's too high, you know, we can do offsets to keep bringing it down, but we do have 2 million coming down already, so.
Director Justin?
So I support the motion because we adopted two-year budget, and it's next October, and I'd like to put it in the budget and hear from the members what they think. And I think, until we put it as something in a future budget, then we don't get the reaction from the members. So I'd like to put it there as a placeholder, knowing that the board is going to look at the budget again next year and can always reverse this motion, because it doesn't affect or take it, take effect until then. It also can be incorporated into the 2027 budget as the staff does it, and they can give us their opinion at that point, what they think in draft one. And I also, when I look at the slide that's on the screen, yeah, we're going to have unassigned triple RF in 2028 of about 3 million, but it also isn't taken into consideration exactly what this motion does, which is that we, we have been making all these investment earnings over time, and the board has not been thinking or talking about them. And as I said last meeting, I am all for the board having this conversation every year. I think that we, it's part of our responsibility to take all of the funds that we have in wherever they all are. And I feel like this is a missing piece of the budget conversation that hasn't actually had the board's ear or eyes on for quite a few years. So I'm supportive of the motion for those reasons. Thanks.
Director Sanders?
May I ask a question to the maker of the motion?
Of course.
So is the intent that when we say move to liquidate triple RF in 2026, is that before we talk as a board?
Can I, can I correct?
Yeah.
It, I'm direct staff to liquidate the unrealized appreciation.
Oh.
So we're not going into what we would call corpus or principle? It's taking the, I hate to say...
The gain.
The gains.
The gain. You like that? Good. Take the gain. I don't want to use the P-word, that's promoting, but it's taking the gains, it's not invading principle.
Yeah.
Okay? Does that help?
That helps, thank you. I, I, yeah, you were talking too fast. So my question is, we would take that action at what milestone, to Jennifer's point, is it as the board is having... To Jennifer's point, is it as the board is having the conversation for budget draft one, and it's just a mile marker for us as a board that we then decide in draft two whether we do take action? Is that the intent of the motion?
That's why I said, Mr. President, that's why I said it was October 31st, so it would happen before the final vote on the budget. So we would be able to look to, okay, how did we do? What do we got? Can we take those funds and use them to build, to pay for the capital expenses? But it's, and if somebody wanted to make it September 30, I'm not going to, I just wanted to have a date so that it wasn't speculative. It's, okay, snapshot, what do we got right now? And I'm happy to have it, you know, September 1, September 30. I just wanted it to be done before we take final action on the budget.
Director McPart.
Just another clarification. When you talk about the unrealized gains, are you thinking about taking 100% of it out, or are you thinking about a portion? I would suggest to consider not 100%, just as a conservative approach, maybe think about a percentage. It can be as high as you can be, but don't go all or none.
Mr. President, if that's a question. The board can change its mind next year.
Okay.
Okay? This is a way of getting the issue in front of the board. Okay?
Understood.
That's what I'm doing here because the board has not been thinking about this. You can go back through the minutes. It's just been growing passively without the board even being conscious of that growth. Remember, it started at 2 and 1/2. Now we're at over 4. And if we don't take any action, it will be 5 or 6 or 7 or 8. And this money was never intended to be a rainy day fund. It was prepayment for anticipated capital expenditures that we now know we're not going to have.
Understood. I was just trying to get a sense, are you looking at, are you assigning a number? Are you just saying, hey, the motion is just think about it and get it out?
The number this year, if we did it now, it would be 442.
446.
446. We could change, if that was the number next year, we could say, okay, we don't want to take 446. You want to take 300. And I'm fine with that.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. That's all.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Director Mullnuck, then Director Lanza, then Director T.
Yeah, I guess a couple things. As it stands, I'm not in favor of this. I don't believe in putting a clock on when to sell into the market because we don't know what the market conditions are going to be in 2026.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, sure. So my comment was, I don't believe we should put a clock on when to sell, selling into the market in 2026. We don't know what that's going to be. We shouldn't be prescribing a sell action, timing the market, et cetera. So that on the surface. Certainly, as a trigger to have a conversation, great, but prescribing a sell, I can't support that. But this is an action that has a, it's a short-term action that has a long-term effect. I don't believe that we should reduce our reserves artificially. You know, I know the change here puts this into 2026, 2027 budget, so I respect that because we do have a very large line item coming in 2027 with the tennis courts. And as I believe I heard from Ed, this fund is going to be tapped to pay for that in The Triple RF anyway, we're not speaking about Rafa, our truest, but Triple RF in general will be tapped more than we are funding it by over $1 million, $1,000,500 in 2027 and again in 2028. So over the next two years, the Triple RF is naturally being drawn down by $2 million. I don't think we need to prescribe a sell action. It's going to happen naturally. So we can talk about it further. We can talk about it in 2026 again for the 2027 budget. No problem doing that, but I just don't think it's necessary.
Director Lanza.
So can I ask a question of Ed for this one?
No.
If you're willing to field the question.
Yeah.
And maybe it's just my financial ignorance, what portion of this is typically dividends compared to just stock growth?
What portion is dividends compared to what?
Growth.
Growth, just from.
Appreciation.
Appreciation.
Well, like I mentioned, we've gotten 446K of unrealized gains, and we've gotten, I think it's a little over 100K of interest and dividends, I can tell you, 77K, so.
So roughly a fifth is.
And that's just legacy capital, by the way. I mean, if you recall, I mean, we're making like 570K of interest overall, but most of that's, you know, on the operating side.
Gotcha.
But on the capital side, that's kind of the breakout.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Santa.
I, I'm torn, but I'm going to vote against the motion because if we look at ourselves, we were just cleaning a motion from last meeting, and sometimes we don't follow our own motion history. And in order to, correct me if I'm wrong, parliamentarian, but in order to amend a motion that has been passed with consent, majority vote, or not 2/3s vote. So if we said, if after a study session came and we said we do not want to liquidate whatever amount by October 31st of 2026, we'd have to procedurally either get a majority or do 2/3s of vote to direct staff to do otherwise. Is that right?
2/3s without notice.
Yep.
Majority with notice.
So considering that our skill set at parliamentarian and Robert Rules of Order, I'm going to vote against this because if no one's paying attention, and let's say I get hit by a bus and somebody else is sick one day, and nobody pays attention, this is going to stay on the books. So I'd rather have the study session, kick it to fiscal. We could do a subcommittee of four, however we want to address this, but I'm not going to beholden myself or a future board to this motion.
Mr. President, can I further inquire of our parliamentarian? We never adopted a motion last time. Looking at the minutes, we didn't adopt a motion. We deferred the question to tonight. I believe my motion is in order under those circumstances. The issue of what the Triple RF, what the Triple RF contribution was deferred, and we agreed to defer it. That's the only action we took.
I don't think.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if this motion, hypothetically, I'm presenting the example that if this motion were to be passed and we changed our viewpoint, it would require a procedural change, and I'm highlighting for this body and our membership that we're not the best stewards of Robert Rules of Order.
It would only require a year from now if you want to change it? Majority vote.
I understand that. My point is, we are horrible ourselves at keeping track of motions. So I'm not going to behold this board and maybe get snuck in, and then we're locked into it. So I'm voting against it.
All right.
Put it on the table.
And comments? Further comments, questions? All right. Director Flashman.
You've explained why you, originally, it was to have it happen this October 31st. And then it was germane with regard to the present budget on which we're going to vote. It was germane to the present budget on which we are going to vote eventually. I know we have a two-year, but the two-years is essentially a repetition of the 26.
I'm sorry, is the speaker making a point of order?
That was a question I was going to ask. Thank you. Yeah, what was the point of that?
So I'm not certain why it's necessary beyond what you pointed out to do this now, and why couldn't we do it in '26.
So yes, he's asking, why is this germane now?
Other than what you pointed out. Is there some compelling reason?
We adopted two-year budget, and by having this here, it will force us to have this conversation a year from now. And that's the point, is to have the conversation and not just passively allow that fund to grow instead of using it to fund our expenses. We haven't been. To the extent, the last three years, we have funded our capital expenses out of the assessment without using the $4 million that's sitting at a corner. And we won't be using it next year either. We won't, we won't use any of the Rafa money until 2027. Maybe, I think we could easily find ourselves being, not using the Rafa money then. And in my humble view, and I said this in the email that's sent around, I think we need to draw that $4 million down, so that we stop at taking too much money from our membership. This is 20 bucks in the assessment. I don't understand why we keep thinking we need to keep taking money from our members when we've got more than enough to fund our capital expenditures.
All right. Director Perry, do you have a question?
No, it wasn't a question. I, you know, I respect Director Farrell's idea that we need to be talking about this on a regular basis. We can't, can't let it continue to, you know, be swept under the rug even if it's accidentally so. However, I have previously expressed my concerns with the funds that are coming up that are necessary, and I am not comfortable with taking this down like this at this time. I recognize that he's moved it to 2027. I'm willing to have the conversation again next year, but I'm not willing, again, like Director Santa said, to hold us to something that we then forget about, and it's done without us ever actually having the conversation.
Okay. We are going to call a question. We've had, just, I think everybody has had a chance to speak. So on this question, all in favor? One, two in favor, against? One, two, three, four, four against, and abstaining.
Abstain.
One, two, three abstaining. So it's four, 2, 4, 3. Motion does not carry.
Mr. President, the other issue that we carried over from last meeting, and I don't know if we want to take final action on it, was it was a motion to reduce the election expense line item from 100,000 to 65,000. Is that still germane?
I'll just remind you, we did reduce it to 85, so not all the way to 65, but we did reduce it some given the new contract that we've signed. But we do expect, we need closer to 85, and that's what's in draft two.
Okay.
Do you want to withdraw it?
Yeah. Director Flashman, yes.
Is that 85 exclusive to the contract?
No, the contract's 65, but there's some other expenses.
There are other expenses beyond the contract.
Right.
Okay.
Printing, mailing.
Yeah, there are lots of things.
Banner.
Printing and so on.
Okay. So did you want to make another motion?
It's on my motion.
Okay. I'm sorry.
The maker of the motion.
I thought Director Juszczyk had repealed or taken it back once she understood that it was including expenses outside of the contract, but perhaps I'm wrong.
The motion, we deferred the question, and the question, the motion was made by Director Juszczyk and seconded by Director Santa. If the makers of the motion want to withdraw it, I won't object, but it seems to me that we owe the makers of the motion disposal of the motion that was pending.
Director Juszczyk, Director Santa, where you at?
Is the board comfortable that staff took it down?
I am.
Without affirming that we're okay with it?
Are you all, is there any objection to staff's action? I see none.
No objection.
Okay. Director Juszczyk?
I will motion to use $164,500 of unassigned funds to contribute to the 2026 capital contribution, which would put the board in a position of funding to the capital contribution, or funding to the capital spend in 2026, which we have traditionally, we have done in the last few And if you look at your CIP under the 2026 column, you'll see that we are expecting to fund $164,500 above the spend for 2026. So I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Motion's made, second discussion.
Question to the maker of the motion?
Director Vrabel.
Mr. President, so your intention here is that we spend $2,685,500?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can, it would be clearer if that was the motion rather than the reduction.
I can restate it.
If you could ask for unanimous consent to make it clear that what you're saying is spend $2,685,500.
Fund, collect.
That would be, this is what we're affirmatively telling you to do.
Collect.
Director Juszczyk, that's your motion?
Yes, I motion that we collect $2,685,500 for a capital spend for 2026.
Second.
And the motion has been made in second. They're opening for discussion. I'm going to go to Mr. Vrabel first.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that the spend is actually $3,377,000. The 2, 6, 8, 5, 500 is after the offsets that we've already factored in, which include 500K of this Triple RF unassigned, 100K of CARF unassigned and the canceled project. So just to be aware that, you know, the spend actually is higher than, you know, that 2,6 number.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Director Perry.
I just want to make sure that with these changes, and I recognize staff put them into budget two, you all are comfortable with this. That's a question for staff. Are you comfortable with this?
I'd like to just maybe try to answer that, Margaret, and just at a high level. One of the things I challenge both Pete and Ed on, because the easiest way to look at reductions in the assessment, and we knew the day we created draft one budget that we'd have discussions about reductions, the easiest way to do that is to look at the capital budget. Fundamental in this conversation is, do we believe that we need to eventually build the contribution, meaning the assessment collection, up to 3, 8? And the conclusion was that the answer to that question was yes. So is it this year? No. Do we need a strategy to make sure we get from the 2, 6 number up to the 3, 8 number? And that's, you know, roughly 70 bucks, new money on the assessment. If we believe that, it's over what period of time? So just thinking about when we start collecting, so that, because there are going to be years that will collect more than we spend, and some years we collect less than we spend. So to answer your question directly, Margaret, no. And we showed you what it would look like to reduce the overall assessment, to go back down to the spend, should the board want to do that. I would caution the board that we spent a lot of time this year thinking we needed to figure out a strategy to make the assessment collection match up with the amount of money we need over the long term. So it doesn't have to be this year. And I think Pete and Ed are ready to try to figure out what the buildup strategy looks like. That would be my best advice for you. So we're choosing not to start now, is what I think could be out on the table.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, thank you. I just, I want to make sure that we're not heading towards special assessments in the future. Thank you.
Director Mullnuck.
I think with the motion at hand, it, we're looking at capital contributions that are increasing over the years, and reducing our capital contribution now puts us in the wrong direction. So in the out years, as we look at '29 and beyond, we're going to be collecting at 3.7. So reducing now to 2, 6 is a big delta, and we need to, we need to ramp up. And so furthermore, the fiscal committee has talked about this and has a recommendation for the board. Again, we entered it into the minutes earlier, but I refer you to motion one from the fiscal committee that they suggest that we increase the Triple RF contribution to 3.1 million if it's supposed to. So I can't vote in favor of it, of the motion at hand, and we'll talk about the alternate after this.
Director Santa.
We can skip my question. I forgot, actually.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this? I see none. Calling a question, all in favor? One, two, three in favor and against? One, two, three.
Against.
Four, five. Four, five against, and abstaining. One, one abstentions.
You voted four against.
Against.
So 3, 5, 1.
3, 5, 1.
So we don't need that other motion.
Okay.
Anything else?
Any other motions?
I have a motion. I, I gotta pull it up to make sure I captured it correctly.
Yeah.
I move that Reston Association Board of Directors, based on the 2025 pool usage data presented by staff, return to similar 2024 pool schedule by removing $175,000 from the Aquatics 526 budget.
Is there a second? Second. Motion's made and seconded, comments or questions?
Go ahead, maker of the motion gets the first shot.
I'll, I'll turn it over to you. I, I've already stated my position in email, we can save my airtime.
I have a substitute motion.
I'm sorry?
So if the membership would like to know, I digged at the data and the 2025 pool expansion provided valuable operational insights, but revealed that more hours did not necessarily drive higher usage. Despite adding 1,400 additional operating hours at a cost of $200,700, overall attendance declined or remained flat across most facilities. Attendance is down about 15% compared to the same point in 2024. The cost per visit has increased essentially, meaning more funding was spent for fewer pool visits, a clear sign of diminishing returns from simply extending hours. Some of my colleagues might say there was a rain factor. Yes, I do not deny that. In fact, it's true, we saw 10 inches more of rainfall. The rainfall was concentrated in the later season of the pool season, after peak pool usage, meaning months like June and July, we would have seen attendance. Expanded pool hours began in Maine, meaning attendance opportunities increased before the bulk of the rain has arrived. In short, I think we need to have, we need to reduce costs without compromising community access and allow us to reallocate our energy towards programming, towards programming that genuinely increases pool engagement.
Director Fleishman?
We changed the method of payment for pool hours by changing the, what we charge members, and we said to members, it's free, thereby transferring the costs back to everyone, not the, not only the users. What role does that play in increasing the costs?
I'm, I'm reducing. So if my reduction were to be in take, it saves $8 on the assessment? For, for the assessment?
You're saying that the costs went up, the cost per went up. And I'm saying, yes, they probably did. I'm not challenging that. What I'm asking is, what is the source of that? And the costs went up because we're no longer charging the users. We're saying everybody pays for us.
I, I'm, I'm basing it on the fact that we had, if you take usage with hours and you look at the ROI, it's, we're spending more on the spend of having pools open than those who are using the pool. That's my reflection. If people, if members drive around any pool, they will see pools throughout the day not at capacity. The community survey said, thank you Pete for bringing this up to my attention, to go look at the community survey, that one of the reasons people don't use pools is because they're overcrowded. Well, we have solved for that problem. We added 1,400 dollars, uh, hours to it, and from year over year, 2024 to 2025, the pool use is not reflective of an increase, it's decreasing. So if I want to be respectful of the 66% of the community members who are subsidizing, because now everyone's paying for it, but not attending the pools, and the middle compromise would be, let me help you and your dues save eight bucks. That, that is a fair compromise, and that's what I'm, and that's what I'm seeking tonight.
Director Mullen, next.
Uh, I don't have a comment for this question.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay.
I, I do.
I think I had, um, Director Farrell?
I'll yield.
Okay, Director Perry?
Uh, thank you. I will go back to the same statement I made the last time that this was discussed, in that I am not willing to drop the change we made after one season. I would be very open to have this conversation again next year once we've had this under our belt for two years. I think at that point, we'll have sufficient data. People will have learned, understood, realized what's going on, and that it is available to them. So I, once again, will not be supporting this because I think it's only fair to our membership to give them a second year and a bite at the apple, just like we give ourselves a second bite at the apple. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Farrell?
Mr. President, I know that there are members of this association that would like us to close pools permanently. That's not what the membership wants. I know that there are members of this board who may feel the same way, but that's not what the membership wants. We're a democracy. The membership has spoken, they want more pool hours, not less. Now, the pending motion was based upon turnstile counts, not actual population in the pool. And as Director Perry has pointed out, and I'm agreeing with her, if someone comes into the pool and stays there for three hours, and somebody comes into the pool and stays there for an hour, the turnstile count doesn't tell you pool usage. It just tells you how many people come in and out. So I have a substitute motion. My substitute motion is to direct the staff during the next pool year to take hourly head counts at each pool when pools are open next season. That way, we'll actually have data as opposed to turnstile counts. We will know how many people are staying in the pool for multiple hours, and we'll have a better sense, an accurate sense, of usage rather than just turnstile counts. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion that has been seconded. Comments on the substitute motion?
A question for staff on the feasibility of doing hourly counts.
So it's a, I'm sorry, it's a twofold answer. So we, we do hourly counts now. The issue with what we do now is that we, we don't know how long people are there, right? So if you walk around the pool, we count, um, you know, from the health department standpoint, we have to do those things. What Director Farrell is asking, I think, and we've talked about this internally already, because this has come up year over year, people would need to scan out of the pool the same way they scan in. So that would allow us to track when someone came, when someone left. We have that ability. It would be culturally, it would be a new phenomenon for Reston, but it is something we are able to pilot next year. So if we were to go down this road, it wouldn't be just a head count exercise, it would be a scan in, scan out exercise.
Director Santa?
I'm going to speak against the motion. So, to make sure my fellow board members understand what's occurring on, a substitute motion means that we're replacing the entire motion that I just made. And the fact is, we are, we are essentially saying that we're okay with spending more money for pool hours when it's not necessary because the members are not showing up to the pool. It is our fiduciary responsibility, just like I were arguing for the CIP and other things, that we actually spend to the usage, the visits that are happening at these pools. So for that reason, I would tell my counterpart that I am happy to amend my motion to include his motion as long as he withdraws his.
I will not withdraw. I'd like a vote on my substitute. Thank you.
All right. Comments, questions? Seeing none. On favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye. Always like mine.
Two, three, four. That's four in favor, against? One, two, three, four against? Abstention, you have one, so it does not pass.
As I, may I speak, because I'm-
To your motion, yes.
As I said earlier, in good faith, I am amending my current motion to add Director-
We have to do that with unanimous consent?
Do I have unanimous consent to amend my motion to include a pilot program that would allow staff to collect the necessary data that John Farrell's talking about?
Pointing of order, motion's out of order. We've already voted on the question, the vote, and it was voted down. So it's already happened.
Yeah.
Is that true?
Yeah, we can't do it twice.
Okay. I was trying to give you one, but you didn't take me, so now it's not even an option.
I think the health department data could be surfaced and, and used effectively.
I'd like to-
Director Lanza?
I'd like to speak in favor of the original motion. And while I think it's a good step, I think we should take it a little further in the future and see if there are other hours that are not producing the ROI that is responsible for the association and potentially could lead to additional savings.
Appreciate that. Any further comments or questions? Director Juszczyk?
Um, I want to confirm that this reduction would still keep the evening hours that we put into the budget for 2025, because I believe that those had a positive ROI, and also keep, um, a season three extension by one week to cover the extra week that FCPS is off. The dollars don't make sense to me because last year, the extra evening hours was a $27,000 increase. And I don't know what the FCPS extra week is. I know it's significant because it goes from four, four pools to 15. So the dollars don't make sense to me that we just reduce by 25, but to, but get to keep both of those things.
Um, so short answer on that. So, just to kind of give the full picture on where we are with pool funding, in draft one of the, of the budget, we were at 1,255 million for guards. We reduced that, um, in draft two to 1.2 million flat, so there's a $55,000 savings. Conversation at the last meeting was about going back as close as we could to the 2025 hours in the 2026 season. We had proposed more hours, um, for 2026. So if we were to take action and move forward with Director Santa's motion, we would be able to fund the, uh, extra hours for FCPS and the night hours that we had in 2025. The offset is that if we move back towards 2024 pool hours, there will be more pools that are closed more often. So we're shifting money and shifting hours. Um, and it might not be an exact dollar for dollar, Director Juszczyk, as we're seeing in the budget, but the real answer is if we're moving back to 2024 hours, there would be pools that have more than one closed day. That's, that's what the answer would be.
Raising my hand for myself. Calling on me.
You're recognized.
I told you, I've been five and a half hours asleep. So Pete, we've got the, we've got data that shows which pools are, you know, have had reduction in use over the course of the last year. Would we focus then the, the pool closures on those pools?
Yep, so, um, for everyone, if you don't remember, there was 20,000 less visits in '25 than there was in 2024 total. So what we would do is exactly what Director Johnson is recommending. We would look at the pools with the least amount of usage. We would then look at it from a north and south perspective, because we always make sure we're trying to have equity, uh, north and south. And then we, the first cuts on hours would be pools that were underused or not as used as others, and then we would take it from there. We have not had this information very long, so I can't give you exactly what we would do, but I know that our staff is, is already cracking on what would this type of schedule look like.
I appreciate that. Further comments or questions on this, um, motion? I see none. So calling the question, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Five in favor, against? One.
Against.
Three against, and abstaining?
Against.
I got you, uh, Director Perry, thank you. And then abstaining, um, Director Juszczyk, thank you. Motion carries. Further motions? Director Mullen, next.
All right. As alluded to earlier, bringing a motion, um, from the fiscal committee that recommends that the board increase the assessment by $12 to fund the triple RF to 3.1 million dollars, approximately equal to the spending level, uh, without an operating expense offset.
Mr. President, the motion's out of order. We already had a vote on what you're going to spend in 2026. So we had the recommendation, we acted on something else. Otherwise, this motion's out of order.
It was the motion that John made that failed, or Jennifer made it?
I made it.
Can't do it twice.
Okay.
I appreciate that, though.
But it's diff-
Can we get a verification with our parliament here?
It's a different motion.
Speaks to funding.
As far as germane though goes, that sits with the chair. Thank you.
That's why I wanted to defer last time. We had a conversation last time about Friends of Reston and their funding. But I did not get a clear take from board members on, are we going to ask Friends of Reston for anything for 2026? Because we haven't yet, and I feel like that board, um, basically requested that we come up with a list, and we haven't done that. So I, I feel like we should have a discussion on that, and we started the discussion last time, but we didn't really get anywhere.
Ma, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, just trying to memory check everybody. I, I thought, I recalled there was a motion for $95,000 that did not pass.
Yes.
It was in all the draft motions. So the, the motion out on the table two, two weeks ago was let's ask Friends for $95,000, and it did not-
Didn't get seconded.
It didn't get a seconded.
Right.
Okay. So I think it stayed there. We didn't come up with an, an alter motion.
Right.
So do you have an alter motion you'd like to provide with a different number?
I, no, I feel, I gave the board a list a couple meetings ago of some potential projects we could ask Friends of Reston to fund. I haven't really heard any feedback from board members on that, but I feel like we should ask them for something.
I agree with that.
I agree with that. I think we just need to figure out what.
I, I thought I saw something in budget two about Friends of Reston request. Is that incorrect, Ed?
So, Ed's going to walk you through the numbers here. We do budget, um, for some revenue because we get scholarships from camps and that sort of things. So if there, I, I can have Ed walk through all of the Friends of Reston money that's already accounted for in the budget. If the desire is to ask Friends for money beyond how much they bring in, in revenue, I think that's the question that's out on the table, and, and for what?
And to ask a, may I ask a question? They have not paid for the trail maps yet. So this would be in addition to the money from last year to pay for the trail maps, correct? Since that money has not been spent by Friends of Reston? Because it came from the last year's budget?
We made, the board made the request, I'm not sure if Friends of Reston made a decision.
I'm trying to remember this. So it could have been with former President Mapar. We, we brought the issue to Friends of Reston. They indicated some interest in that and were awaiting us to come back, is the way I recall it, because we were going to go do some GIS work, and Pete and the ops team were getting that all put together. So we have not been back since because that work isn't quite finished yet.
So, we're starting off with 40K? Because that, wasn't that the number, 40K for the trail maps? Fif, I thought it was 50.
It was 40K.
It was, I thought it was 40. So our starting place is 40.
Last year was 40.
It's in the capital.
To answer Margaret's question, uh, I don't think anything was changed in the draft two budget related to Friends. It was the same as in draft one, which really is just camps. We have about 42K in mainly for the regular camps, but also a little for nature camp and swim and tennis, but the bulk of that in camps, but we have like 42K, but that's it. That was the same draft one and draft two.
Okay. I'm a little, um, uncomfortable with like this amorphous conversation because we don't have a number to give to them. So I don't, we're not really discussing any particular issue. We're just saying, we want money, but we don't know how much. So I-
I mean, I can go over the projects that I put on my list if they're, and then there's a dollar value for each of those. And I believe you had one, you talked to me about it over the phone, and I forgot what it was. But we have, uh, GIS mapping in 2026 for 50,000. That, we also have, there's HVAC for Nature House. I want to say it's 19,000, that's in the operating budget. operating budget. There is some ADA work at Nature House that is in the 2026 budget. And I, just for iteration of the Board, Friends of Ruston funded Nature House creation, if you didn't know. So traditionally, when we've had work or improvements we needed to do at Nature House, the previous boards have asked, and they've said yes to those. I believe there's also a fire ring over at Nature House. There's a few things at Nature House.
Just so everyone is tracking, the Walker Nature Center ADA Trail and Fire Ring is in the 2027 CIP, $55,000. Just so everyone is tracking. There is some money, I can't remember the exact dollar amount, but there is some money in the operating budget for HVAC maintenance at Walker Nature Center.
So can I suggest that we create a motion that, for instance, perhaps lumps all of the Nature Center spending as requests for Friends of Ruston? And then we do line items for, perhaps a separate motion for each line item, or we do a collective for the rest? But I'd like, again, I'd like to give some structure to this conversation.
I move to request funding for Nature House improvements and maintenance from the Friends of Ruston for the monies needed for 2026 and 2027.
John says he needs a dollar amount.
Are you saying like the numbers that are already in the budget?
I will look at staff for that number amount.
If we made it 55,000, that would be the ADA Trail improvements and the fire ring in 2027 in the CIP.
Would that include the, I'm sorry, would that include the GIS? Actually, that's an additional line item. Okay.
Mr. President, can I ask Mr. Lusk a question?
Please.
Those funds are for 2027.
Correct.
Are there any Nature House funds for 2026?
In the operating, they're in the operating budget.
Yep. Can you give me a minute? I may not have enough.
It's fine.
I mean, for heating and air conditioning, we have 4,000. I'm not sure if that's what you were meaning, Pete. For facility repair and maintenance, there's, what is the number? 4,000 there?
Thank you for bearing with us, Director Perry. Still holding on for your motion.
Can I just ask a question of Director Perry? As you made that motion, is the intent of this conversation to look at lowering the assessment, assuming revenue that's not accounted for in the current budget and assessment? Or is it looked to be an additive thing? In the recent years, anyways, the Friends of Ruston has funded what we would call additive things. So they fund scholarships for kids that would otherwise not be accounted for, as compared to subsidizing the RA budget, or something that, you know, depending on how the revenue is accounted for. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on mechanically what's being discussed as we get to the end of this.
Certainly. So in this case, what I'm asking for is for us staff to approach Friends of Ruston and ask to cover those costs previously listed, specifically for the Nature Center for year through 2027. And if it lowers the cost to the assessment, icing on the cake.
It's like 30 cents, or whatever it is. What's 55K?
Okay, so-
Second.
The motion is made and seconded. Are there comments or questions?
I'll speak for the motion. I think Jennifer has brought up a salient point. So have Jennifer in both of these, and this facility is for the community, and it ties with the mission of FOR. So I'm glad that we're getting this done.
Okay. I see no other questions or comments. Calling the question, all in favor?
In favor.
Unanimous of all in attendance.
Can we just have somebody repeat the dollars? So Ed's clear on exactly what, just pass.
Whatever Peter says on the spreadsheet.
You guys are figuring that out.
I, right, I was going to say you guys can figure it out, but I wrote 19,000 in my, it's in there somewhere, related to Nature Center.
We got it.
For 2026. And then for 2027, it's 71,698.
Asking their consent to amend the prior motion or reflect those numbers.
Is there objection?
We just had it.
I see no objection. All right. Think that's it? Any further motions or comments?
I have a question for the Chair. On the motion that was deemed out of order, maybe I apologize that I didn't recognize the timing sequence. That's procedural error on my part. I did circulate these motions prior, kind of with our best practices here. The intent of the motion was to bring the motions by the Fiscal Committee to the awareness of the Board. And I believe by voting the motion out of order, we're silencing their voice. So-
Appreciate that. It's noted. Director Farrell?
Mr. President, I move that the Board adopt the fifth draft 2026-2035 Capital Improvement Plan as presented to us this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Questions or comments? I see none. Calling the question, all in favor? Seven, I have seven in favor. Director Perry?
In favor.
Eight. So that's eight, one, zero. It's, Director, against. All right. I think that ends our budget marathon. You guys have clear on the direction for the last draft?
I believe so, yes. So at your next meeting, you will receive, there's lots of paperwork that has to be done. So we'll have all the different things that go into the creation of the budget. So we'll have all of those prepared, and then in your packet for that night.
Thank you very much.
I move to, are you going to do it?
Executive?
Yeah, go.
Mr. President, I move that the Ruston Association Board of Directors-
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Would it be prudent before you'd want an executive session to extend it as it is 10 o'clock?
I think that's a great idea.
Mr. President, I move to extend to 11:00.
Sorry, second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Oh, I'm sorry, Director Perry's, Director Perry?
I would abstain, because I would prefer to be watching my campfire than continuing. But so be it.
Okay.
Mr. President, I move to convene your executive session to consult with legal counsel and discuss contractual and personal matters.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
In favor.
Unanimous. Thank you.
We need counsel. Who else do we need?
Hello, this is Peter Lusk, Chief Operating Officer with the Ruston Association. This presentation is to report on the last round of facility condition assessments conducted by the Association in 2025. Earlier this year, the Board of Directors funded facility condition assessments for all 15 pools owned by the Association. To date, all assessments and reporting has been completed for all 15 pools. All community buildings have been assessed and reporting has been received within the Association, and all 110-foot bridges for the Association have been assessed and reporting has been received. We'd like to thank the Board of Directors for providing us this opportunity. We believe the data and this effort has been beneficial to the Association in building the Capital Improvement Plan, and also projecting costs for the future for the Association. As a reminder, when reading these reports, all facilities are rated on a one-to-five scale, five being an excellent score and one being a crisis score. Any facility receiving a rating of four or five means that there are not defects observed and that are not impacting the function of the asset in the near term. A rating of two or three means that there is some visible deterioration, and in some cases, means that the asset is near the end of its useful life. And a rating of one or crisis means that components are critically damaged and no longer functioning. A few tips for reviewing the report. Swimming pools in the report actually refers to swimming pools. Fountains refers to wading pools for sites that have wading pools. A site system is an asset located within a site, like a building roof. Plazas mostly refer to concrete on the site or an entry area of the facility. And FCI, or Facility Condition Index, is a measure of relative condition of assets across a portfolio of facilities. SCI is similar to FCI, except it relates to the site and not the facility. So that could relate to fencing, or landscaping, or things of that nature. Deferred Maintenance is the dollar value of maintenance and repairs that have not been performed when they could have or should have been. Current Replacement Value is the replacement value of that asset in $25. And then Estimated Useful Life and Remaining Useful Life refer to the estimated duration of an asset, and the length of time an asset will operate before it requires repair or replacement. The FCI and SCI just referenced on the previous slide will be located at the top of each slide. Further down in the report, the Current Replacement Value is also included in these slides, and the rating system is included on the far left-hand side of each facility slide coming up in the report. As you review the report, you may see something called a local project. Local projects are maintenance projects or projects within a system. This means that there may be some maintenance, or a project that is local to a system that can be completed without replacing an asset, such as a white coat or plaster project within a pool. Deferred Maintenance is referenced throughout these reports. Deferred Maintenance is the dollar value of maintenance and repairs that have not been performed when they could have or should have been. The good news for the Association is that our level of deferred maintenance is very low throughout all of the condition assessments that have been completed throughout 2025. Now, let's review our first facility in the report, the Dogwood Pool Bathhouse. The Dogwood Pool Bathhouse has a building FCI of .015 for an excellent rating. This means that there may be some maintenance projects that should be addressed over the next few years, but there are no critical, poor, or fair assets to be found at this facility. Next comes the Dogwood Site and Pools. Again, a very good score here, .073. This means that the Dogwood Pool and Pool Building have been maintained to a high standard. 50% of the assets on this site were deemed to be excellent. 50% were deemed to be in good condition. To review the specific ratings of the wading pool and the swimming pool at Dogwood, there are no immediate needs. In 2026 and 2027, there is a white coat that could be planned in 2028, and both facilities have a condition rating of five or excellent. We'll next move to the Glade Bathhouse. The Glade Bathhouse was found to have a .035 building FCI, with over 80% of its assets found to be in excellent or good condition. There is a plan for some maintenance down the road in these facilities, as you can see on this chart, between 2029 and 2035, but no immediate needs at the Glade Pool House. The Glade Pool Site and the pools on the site received a condition rating of .113 for a rating of good. 75% of the assets on the site were deemed to be in good condition. As you look at the potential investments for this site, as you look out to 2032, there is a potential to replace the slide and some of the site furnishings, such as umbrellas, the stairs to the slide, and the big popular water slide on the site, which is the driver of the cost you see in 2032. But in the immediate, there are no concerns at the Glade Site or the Glade Pools. Just to reiterate that point, specifically on this slide, we see the wading pool and the swimming pool at Glade. Some maintenance to be done in 2026, but both bodies of water receive a condition rating of four, and we see some investments projected out through 2035. Moving on to the Hunters Woods Bathhouse. The Hunters Woods Bathhouse received a building FCI of .026, with over 75% of the assets on the site receiving a good or excellent rating. Again, as is the theme with this report, there is some minor maintenance planned between 2026 and 2035, with a potential investment for some site furnishings in 2035. The Hunters Woods Site and the pools on the site received a site condition index of .112. 55% of the assets on the site were deemed to be in excellent or good condition. The report for the Hunters Woods Site projects over $400,000 worth of equipment to be replaced in 2027. Some of this equipment is already built into the Ruston Association Capital Improvement Plan in 2026. This is filtration and chlorination equipment for the pools. And then in 2027, the Association has already pre-planned for replacement of spray park equipment on the site. This is a good example of the Association's plans matching up with the results of the condition assessments that came from an outside consultant. This slide indicates a little more detail on the wading pool and the swimming pools at the Hunters Woods Site. Both bodies of water received a condition rating of four, with a 2027 investment potential for white coats on each pool. Next, we move to the Lake Thoreau Bathhouse. The Lake Thoreau Bathhouse was renovated in 2023 and received a building facility condition index of .052. As you would expect from a building that was just recently renovated, 96% of the assets in the building were deemed to be in excellent condition, with recommendations for minor investments over the next 10 years. Same is true of the Lake Thoreau Pool. The Lake Thoreau Pool actually received a perfect condition rating, with 100% of the assets being deemed as excellent. This is a little more detail on the site and the pools at Lake Thoreau. The wading pool, and the spa, and the swimming pool were deemed to be a condition rating of five, with no investments planned over the next 10 years, with the exception of minor maintenance that is completed by the Association. It's important to remember as we look at these slides, that most of the dollars that would be indicated on these slides are for capital investment, while the Association continues to invest in maintenance dollars that wouldn't be indicated on these slides. The last pool that was assessed for the Association was the Shadowwood Pool and Bathhouse. The Shadowwood Pool also received a building FCI of zero, as it was recently renovated in 2023. Over 90% of the assets in this building were deemed to be in excellent or good condition, with recommendations for minor replacements of some electrical equipment and hot water heaters. The Shadowwood Pool received a site condition index of .079. 86% of the assets on this site were deemed to be in excellent condition, with a white coat scheduled potentially for 2030. And as you would expect for a pool that was renovated in 2023, both the wading pool and the swimming pool received a condition rating of five. That concludes the pool condition assessments for 2025. All 15 reports can be found in Board of Directors reports and in videos that have been posted by staff. Further information will be coming to the ruston.org website. Further information will be coming to the reston.org website. We now move on to foot bridges. This was the last asset class that was approved by the Board of Directors to be assessed in 2025. The association owns over 100-foot bridges that are located on pathways and other areas within RA property. Seventy-one percent of these foot bridges owned by the association were found to be in excellent or good condition. Twenty-nine percent were found to be in fair condition. Good news for the association here in that none of the foot bridges were found to be in poor condition. The projected need on this slide indicates recommendations from the consultant. Staff are evaluating these recommendations and have included the following in the capital improvement plan for 2026, 2027, 2028, and 2029. This slide indicates the four foot bridges that are in the most immediate need of replacement or maintenance. Staff have included these four bridges in the most recent version of the capital improvement plan that was sent to the Board of Directors for Budget Draft Number Two for the year 2026. Pedestrian Bridge Number 110, 17, 19, and 37 are included in the CIP for maintenance or replacement. Bridge Number 110 is a maintenance project only and will not be replaced, while 17, 19, and 37 will need to be designed before they are replaced. Understanding that only four bridges are in urgent need of maintenance or repair tells us two things. The first is that our central services facility staff are doing a wonderful job of maintaining our foot bridges. The second is that having these assessments completed and having data that can inform us regarding of the condition of our assets puts us in a place to put a more informed capital improvement plan together. So what are the next steps for our condition assessment now that we've gone through many of our assets within the organization? All of our condition assessments are now complete that have been funded by the Board of Directors. Facilities with immediate needs are included in the 2026 through 2035 capital improvement plan that will be presented to the Board of Directors. Staff are now going to use all of the data that has been provided as part of the condition assessments to evaluate future additions and/or revisions to the CIP. And lastly, staff will create a final report that includes all of the assessments that have been completed and will post that information on the Reston Association homepage. Please expect that report to be posted before the end of 2025. Thank you for listening. We look forward to answering any questions.
And we're back.
Mr. President, I move to extend the meeting to 11:20.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Santa?
If it dies, then...
Abstain.
Okay, that is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 0, 1.
Mr. President, I move that the Resin Association Board of Directors certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only those matters appropriate for executive session involving personal matters and consultation with counsel were discussed and considered by the board during executive session.
Second.
Motion to be in second, all in favor?
Aye.
In favor.
unanimous?
Mr. President, I move to approve Darren Benjamin for the position of member to the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion is made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
In favor.
Unanimous?
Mr. President, I move to adopt the draft agenda for the regular board of directors meeting on November 13, 2025, at 6:30, with the change that the item G is the secretary quarterly update. And then, Mr. President, I'm looking forward to amendments to that motion in order to provide some, an hour and a half of time on the agenda that we talked about in executive session.
I would like for item J, and I've consulted with council, that that could be pushed out by one month, unless Jennifer is shaking her...
That's fine.
Or we could move item L, the sustainability plan.
That has been pushed and pushed and pushed.
Now is the disintegration one.
So many things have been pushed and pushed and pushed.
Since the spring.
So...
One is compliance related, the other one's just a plan. If I had to pick, let's do compliance, kick the plan, but I do what the will of the body wants.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask you unanimous consent to postpone item H to December, to postpone item J to December, and to postpone item L to December.
J and L.
H is the Jim McDonnell Lake Swim, J is the complaint procedure, and L is the sustainability plan. I'm asking for unanimous consent.
I'm going to object to that because I think we can do the lake swim fairly quickly. So I would just like to move J and L to December.
I wish I could agree with you, but I haven't seen their request.
That only gives us 40 minutes.
Understood.
And we're trying to carve out an hour and a half, and so I agree, I kind of agree that we should get rid of all three.
I'm okay with it.
The only, the only, we let Ashley go, but that would leave the quarterly update, which is informational, and we're going to get a document, the budget, which we've adopted the capital budget, so now we're just down to the operational budget, and the HR manual.
So I could get done.
And I'd like to know, I wish Ashley was still here, I'm not su... Do we need to adopt the HR manual before Thanksgiving?
I'm going to withdraw my objection. Let's stick with H. H, Jane.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, is there any objection to...
We're taking out H, we're taking out J, we're taking out L.
Any objection?
And we're adding in the executive session.
We already have executive session.
It's already, it's, I'm...
You want to do it at the end?
Yeah.
We're going to do all for an hour and a half.
And, and, and change, change new business to 11:00.
That's the max we can do, correct? Without extending it?
No, if we adopt an agenda, then we don't, at a later time, then we don't have to follow the motion.
I will move to suspend the resolution on the meeting of November 13, and to extend the new business to 11:00.
All right then.
Sold.
So I need a, I need a second on that motion, second. Mr. President, we need a board on that.
Motion's made in second, and all in favor? Unanimous, except for Director Perry.
I abstain.
Okay, so that's, again, 6, 0, 1.
So must that change, Mr. President? I'm, I'm moving the agenda and taking out item H, item J, item L, and moving the new business to 11:00. That should give us the time we talked about.
All right.
And changing the secretary to quarterly.
Quarterly.
Yeah, so I think we did that with unanimous consent as well. We're good to go, right?
Did Margaret consent to that?
Director Perry?
I ask for unanimous consent, is there an objection?
I've been waiting to hear from Director Perry if there's any. I don't hear any. We're done. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.